Good evening, everybody, and I call this meeting of the regular Board of Supervisors meeting to order in beautiful King William County. Mr. Trump.
Mr. Moskowski.
Here.
Mr. Greenwood.
Yeah.
Mr. Carver.
Here.
Mr. Morton.
Here.
Chairman Hodges.
Here. And if you would stand with me for a moment of silence followed by the pleasure of leaving. Does anybody have any? One. Uh, Michael. Everyone reviewed this meeting agenda.
Chairman, if we adopt the amended agenda we had before us.
Mr. Trump, end of discussion. Mr. Trump.
Mr. Ringwood.
Aye.
Mr. Carver.
Aye.
Mr. Morton.
Aye.
Mr. Moskowski.
Aye.
Chairman Hodges.
Aye. All right, before I go into citizens' comments, folks, in our bylaws, we did change one item. There will be no more group uh, representation, but every individual that wants to speak, you take chance, and it will be three minutes. If you'd like to come forward on any non-public hearing issue, come forward now. And I've forgotten. State your name and district.
Good evening. My name is Jacob Levy. I live at three, three, four, five, Herring Creek Road in Allen, Fifth District. Uh, I came to you guys in July of twenty twenty and spoke about tax allowance, parking in the county, and the effect of surrounding using the property regarding high scores and property values being possibly decreased by these dilapidated parts. I had mentioned that five years previous, I was continuously calling about aborting property and getting the runaround from the treasurer and the attorney he had hired. I was then told to stop calling, and they would get around to it eventually. After speaking here in July of twenty twenty, he developed an initiated audits in the Commissioner of Revenue's office as well as the Treasurer's office. I'm sure you recall, this made a lot of waves in the Treasurers and Commissioner Revenue's offices, as well as the community with numerous articles that tied order review and all coaching. Well, that's during the pot called a lot of shakeups in these offices, which led to some people eventually resigning from their positions, as well as shoving from life and the tax deductivity and lack of action in collecting that real estate back. Once a new treasurer came in, I started calling her, and she would decline my call and was very helpful in this matter. Finally, on September fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, the first tax auction in the county for at least twenty-five years was held with over half a million dollars in sale reported, plus some of the parcels, parcels were recovered. Recovered means the landowners paid their taxes to prevent them from being sold at auction. My luck, I got to a bidding war with the half of that free fancy post and ended up getting the parcel that reported my property after seven plus two years of chasing the local government to come and buy it. I'm down on the property and all the evidence clearly cleared of all the trash I was dumped on it. I know at times it was awkward and uncomfortable to the gentleman, gentleman during that process, and I was gradually pumping the board with all the help and attention that's given. However, it wasn't for help. My neighbors and I would personally thank all of you, as well as various in Bangor and Kirkstaff for performing their civil duties and getting the right they done. Hopefully, the county will never hit that situation again. The county has now a president that is not paid a real estate tax, and the county will collect one letter of help. Thank you for your attention on this matter. Thank you, three pounds.
Thank you.
Good evening, folks. Uh, so here's um, Greenwood, South Mountain, New York, Central District. Today was uh, especially, they're calling here, and they talked about, some of the delegates, I saw it talk about issues going with highway talk. And one of the priorities where the roads are falling, falling outside, white lines, you know, there's always that week. The other day I went to school, but it won't be a fault of us, because there's no justice left. And, you know, playing about three fifty in the grass or hard, so, and little thought came from that third, twenty-six. And after all, when the men say, they told me not to have here to be meeting tonight, they will be tight-tight and take people, but they don't want to talk about this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Kevin, the report for the council, this is five, ever three years ago, I think it was fourteen dollars. When we said publicly what most thought or a couple of the faces, the lead of the current state, but here we are now in the summer. Last May, month, I made some comments regarding this four changes to the transition of parents' daughters. We learned to do something different than what is trying to go to save your crisis. Call the rule law cross rule, law, guideline, call whatever you want. There is a chance. Reality is, so, when you're about to see this, you power, you make this decision, make it personal, it's credited with county forty, and it's citizen by name, takes on a form of law, is acting, not that correct. Now, it's even one of your other reasons, it's still a result, but one person is still willing and capable to start it. And last week's meeting, we said that the board was breaking up a law regarding the other, and this board never listened to what was said, when we viewed the data of the forty, they would assume the board would never be the phrase people want. I chose my words wisely. I recommend four hundred and forty-four to our. The allegations I made regarding that whole conduct for, for disclosing conversations, helps, etc., now that I've set the record straight on a letter in the accusation. This board stands by the word. Therefore, this piracy says nothing wrong. Furthermore, if this citizen's plan is to do, in this board's actions, three other topics were made. First was, there were fewer elected to work assigned to letter. While true, while this does keep volume of the elected citizens of the county. He just didn't sound a little bit like what his father was saying, but asked by the parents, so they didn't something wrong. Well, I think he did, he thinks so. What I find in this dream, the two citizens sign a letter, county attorneys or school department, with letters to each other. Second reason, without this conflict, and I agree that it is conflict, but where is the citation, so, to choose the right to request, and the judge's ability to serve a business standard process rule or guide? Coming from a board that is so closely attached to the very partners to law, the department's conference is far more credible, decided reference to the code for similar to the new service I said so. Three, there's also the fact that there is more to this situation taking up, or what did I, where was the press release, the official statement, anybody hold the town hall? If there are seemingly in county government, nothing on Facebook, where did you attempt to clarify your actions? I'm just going, and what I read in the week letter, the code, what county employees have told me, or what I've read in newspapers, or I have seen, no correction provided to that report. But there is more to it, and why wasn't that also the part of the code? It seems your graphic rationale is just by your act, and citizens yourself, this is all citizens, those crazy terms are, or we pass votes when it's all throughout your term, we seem disallowed to send the Congress a face book in the mail now resisting from public commentary to support the monkey. Even self-renewal of public notice, or assignments to board to finish. Rarely if ever, those who are acting with something in the public process, unless you consider the treatment provided, the kind of tax.
Three, three minutes, Mr. Couch.
Mr. Couch. That's, that's end of your time, sir. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, if yours at the, what do you, Mike is not working?
Again.
Again. Again.
We just turned off, I think, last time. First of all. Anyone else? Seeing that, I will close the public comment period. And I have one item that's on the, that's not on the agenda, and I have, and one more speaker, Sheriff Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Moustache Craft. Thank you, thank you for giving me just a moment of your time. I've been serving the citizens of King William County for nearly forty years, beginning as a dispatcher, then a deputy sheriff, and now serving as your sheriff for the last twenty-three years. I've been blessed to have worked the career that I love. But it, it's come time for me to move on to the next chapter of my life. So tonight, I'm formally announcing my uh, intention not to run for reelection, and I will retire at the end of this year. I want to thank you for your support that you've given me over the years, and to the support that the citizens of King William have given. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Sheriff. All right, members of the board, uh, consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
A little discussion. Mr. Trump.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The next item we have up, uh, if Mr. Vernon Holmes and Lisa Roberts and anyone else you have with the group would come forward. You don't really do that. I think we'll have to step down with them.
Mr. Chairman, if it pleases the group, I'd like to read her Resolution twenty-three oh five into the minutes before it's presented. Uh, Resolution twenty-three oh five, recognizing and honoring February twenty twenty-two as Black History Month. Whereas in nineteen twenty-six, black historian, author, journalist, and founder of the Association for the Study of African American, African American Life and History, Carter G. Woodson launched Negro History Week with the purpose of bringing attention to the need for acknowledging and accurately representing black history in schools. And whereas Woodson once remarked, if a race has no history, then it has no worthwhile tradition, becomes a negligible factor for the thought of the world, and it stands in danger of being exterminated. And whereas Black United Students and Black Educators at Kent State University used the foundation laid by Woodson to found Black History Month on February first, nineteen seventy, and six years later, the month was officially recognized by the federal government during the nation's bicentennial. And whereas the Association for the Study of African American Life and History, the founders of Black History Month announced that the twenty twenty-two theme of Black History Month is Black Health and Wellness, exploring the legacy of black scholars and medical practitioners in Western medicine, and considering the activities, rituals, and initiatives that black communities have done to be well. Whereas Black History Month is a time to recognize and honor the many people, events, and significant contributions of black people into our community, nation, and world. And whereas over three thousand black people live, work, and play in King William County, it makes significant contributions to our economy, arts, culture, science, education, and more. Now therefore, be it resolved, the King William County Board of Supervisors is hereby recognizing February twenty twenty-three as Black History Month.
Our next item up is a VDOT update, Lee McKnight.
Good evening, members of the board. It's good to be back. Um, just give you all a couple of updates from VDOT in King William County. Construction projects underway. The Route six thirty-four Kentucky Road Rule Rustic project has begun. Um, we've done some trimming, and we're getting that road ready for the Rule Rustic program. It should be complete by spring, summer timeframe this year. Route six forty-one Sandy Point Road is another Rule Rustic. Uh, that is, we've begun trimming that road in preparation. Again, that road should be complete by the spring, summer timeframe as well. Uh, Route thirty from e, uh, point one four miles east of Route three sixty to point one seven miles east of Route six hundred. That's going to be paved. That's approximately two point six eight miles of Route thirty that will be paved this year. Uh, construction projects upcoming. Um, Tremor Shop Road will be spring of twenty twenty-four. West Spring Forest Road will be spring of twenty twenty-five. Green Level Road will be spring of twenty twenty-seven, and East St. John's Church Road will be spring of twenty twenty-five as well. Um, I do want to give a, a brief update on smart scale. Those projects have been scored, and King William did receive two projects in that, that update, which is great news. Uh, the first project was the Route three sixty-six eleven Venture Road Walnut Road, our lane roadway improvements. Uh, that was the number ten overall project in the entire district, so very excited about that, that news. Um, and then Route three sixty and six forty-seven Mill Road roadway improvements at that intersection. That was the number fifteen overall project in the district as well. So again, some good stuff coming out of that, that uh, smart scale program, and hopefully we can address some of those issues at those intersections. Uh, some bridge projects in the next twenty-four months. I did want to mention Route six twenty-nine over Jack's Creek. That's to begin here in spring of twenty twenty-three, and Route six oh four Herring Creek Road over Herring Creek, there's some scour, there's a scour repair project in the spring of twenty twenty-three as well there. Um, I did want to mention, I've been working with staff on Route six forty-one Sandy Point Road, uh, in the access road going into Sandy Point Forest. I, we're reviewing some options for possible projects there for some rec- recreational access, so pretty excited about that. I think we can find some, some state dollars there to get something done. And that's all I have, and I will be glad to take any questions that the board may have.
Well, uh, Mr. Chair, if I may, that section of Route thirty that you're talking about, I was, I was physically writing when, when you were addressing that. Where is that at? Was it like two miles?
It, it's uh, I'll get you the exact, it, it's kind of convoluted in the way I wrote it down, but I'll get you the exact.
I was just wondering if that was anywhere near the area that Mr. P S R was uh, speaking, speaking of earlier.
Yeah, I will, I will, I will get with them on that as well, and, and I'll see where we are with our maintenance planning, because that is one of the items, is shoulder maintenance, and um, we'll be sure to get that on our, on our plans for all of Route thirty.
And Mr. Chair, if I may, one more. Uh, we did a, y'all did a traffic count on Brandywine Road, you know, several months ago. Uh, do you, I'm sure you don't have those numbers. Uh, was it? I think it had to be, I forget what it was, the number of vehicles per day.
It has to be fifty vehicles per day. Um, and that, that was done, and I'm trying to remember. I don't remember. I'm sorry, Mr. Gar.
Well, you, you can just send me an email. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. McKnight, and Percy, did we get a date yet exactly, on June twenty?
No, I, I don't think the uh,
anyway, we're tentative with what's going to be asked that you, that, and I guess VDOT does the approval on blocking the highways.
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir.
And this would be on thirteen oh one, uh, from the courthouse entrance back to six thirteen, this road out here.
Okay.
It's that little section in there, and they want to do a car show with their event.
Okay.
Well, it'll be private second week. Yeah, I think the preliminary day was talked about June seventeen, June second, June seventeen.
Okay. Yeah, we, we can, we'll, we'll, I'll get with, with Percy on that. It's just a simple permit process.
Y'all block it off, but we need to come up with a way of doing it.
Um, typically, the, the event organizers would be blocking that, or, or the local police department uh, would block the road, but we, I'll get with Mr. Ashcraft on that one. June seventeenth.
Yes, the ten.
Okay.
And I, actually, the whole event is ten right now, but it's in the early stages, and they're moving forward now.
Okay.
Mr. McKnight, I was just wondering, what is the criteria for like, uh, some of the people we're saying for just general repairs? I know there's a budget for repairs, of the budget for Rule Rustic, there's different, but how many complaints, or is it like our county complaint driven? I mean, you get fifty pothole complaints, and you work on, because I mean, some roads ran into VDOT people, and they come out with a truck with two hundred buckets of five gallon asphalt. They do it by hand, and he's telling me that they can't do over five hundred feet of fixing, because then it's considered contractor work. And like you said, with the, a lot of the road up Shaw's, the edge is up to four off, three sixty, the edge is four off. If you run off the road, it's a six inch drop. It cuts up your tires. I don't know.
For sure. Do we need to show you those things, or? No, and it's a great question. It's something that I, I've since coming back to Saluda, that I've really been trying to focus on hard, is to be less complaint-driven and more systematic planning of the maintenance activities, and that is something that we are, it, it, we are moving forward with. It's a slower process in some areas, but it's a great question. Um, the, kind of the, the way that we've started with, with shoulders, for example, is before any of the paving projects, we go out there and we'll, we'll grade the shoulders, we'll, we'll pull the ditches, we'll clean the pipes out for whatever that section of road that's about to be resurfaced, and, and the idea is when that new asphalt goes down, it's going down in, in, in a well-maintained area, and it's going to last a lot longer, because the, the shoulders are being repaired, and, and there's no standing water on the asphalt. Um, and then from there, kind of branching out, um, beyond just the paving schedule. That's just a starting point. So it, it is a good question, and I will definitely check with Route thirty in terms of the shoulder um, and, and the other maintenance items, not just the shoulders, but other maintenance items. In terms of the patching, um, there's a lot of different types of patching that can be done. There's hand patching, there's machine patching, so I don't know exactly what they're referring to, but in, in general, when we use machine patching for our patching contract, yes, we're limited to about five hundred feet of, of patching material. Now, if it makes logical sense to go beyond that to a degree, we'll, we'll go ahead and do that, but uh, that's the general rule of thumb. Anything beyond that needs to be planned for more long-term and put on the resurfacing schedule. Um, so that's, that's, I think, what they were referring.
And things of, they were hand patching. It was just a big pickup truck with the buckets, and they, there was no machines. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'll leave the grass to Ed, uh, because I'm sure that's, that's one that you've got. Um, I'll, I'll focus on one of my own district, um, West St. John's. We've got East St. John's on the plan for twenty twenty-five. We talked about West St. John's before, and I think we want to get that on next time we read here, but there's still, there's ongoing maintenance issues down there. I know they reach out when, when they do have issues, but every time it rains down there, just like all the other unpaves, they're having, they're having big issues, so if we could just keep that road sustainable until we can get it on the list and, and get it paved, which I know is still a ways out, but they do reach out, you know, quite frequently, just to remind me that, hey, it's, it's, we need to have somebody come down here and fix this up.
Yes, sir. I do have one unrelated to grass, but the, uh, your website to report issues, is that the best way for VDOT, or is calling the eight hundred number?
Yeah, the, the, the website is a great way to do it. The one eight hundred number is also a wonderful way as well. Um, but I would recommend call, making a work order so that there's a paper trail, and there's a record of that. Uh, we track all that internally, see how many work orders are, are open, how long it takes them to be closed, what kind of work orders there are, so, um, yes, that would be my recommendation.
And maybe Moustache Craft, we can get that web link and, and uh, post it, but I did use it, uh, last year to get a couch out of the ditch up in District Five, and took a while, but it disappeared, so.
Before I mentioned, great, or did you already?
Cut the grass.
Is this the, this is grass on three sixty, correct?
Grass.
Yeah, it's, it's been an ongoing problem. We talked about this, this last year, and I think at one point in time, did we, did we go forward and handle it ourselves at one point in time this year?
Yeah. Yeah.
We talked about, we, we had got an in-depth discussion about spraying and treating and all that stuff, but it, it, it didn't really work, so we did end up having to come out and do it ourselves, um, just to get the line of sight restored, because I mean, it got to the point where it was, it was more than an aesthetic uh, unpleasantness. It was a, it was a sightline hazard, so, um, we'd rather you guys take care of that.
Understood.
So, yeah, we can just get a little bit more attention as we move into the, into the spring growing season, how we might arrest some of that growth and just manage it, uh, with the resources you guys are given to do it. It, it's, it's an ongoing problem.
The chemicals doesn't do anything this time of year?
No, this time of year, there, the grass is dormant for the most part.
Okay, apparently it's high.
Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll definitely check on that.
We had spurts of occasional growth throughout the, yeah.
Yeah, sir. Um, I just wanted to give you an update. Uh, yes, we did move forward with, uh, hiring a third party to do some cutting there, but we've also, um, uh, reached out to, uh, a landscaping company, and we will be seeding wildflowers along in the intersection area for next year. Um, in an attempt to, one, help with the grasping too high, as well as just beautification of the, the intersection. That, of course, isn't going to extend, but so far.
Right. Uh,
I know this, this is still on that subject, wildflowers. You need to, uh, spray some form of roundup.
That's part of the contract.
To kill everything prior to, unless it'll be a convoluted mess.
Right.
Okay.
And one more. Uh-oh. The canal westfall.
Okay.
The utilities, or y'all, y'all have any plans to level those out? I mean, most of them are down below the surface.
The utility?
Yeah, the manhole covers.
Oh.
The, uh, smaller, you know, uh, extract. And I mean, there, some of them are right there.
Is this on Route thirty, or?
It's pretty much all over town.
Okay.
You know, when it did, they, they usually take pay this year.
Okay. All right, I'll follow up on that. Okay.
Everybody here? Yeah. Percy, stay, you need to, I'll have her.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Lee.
And Sherry, you doing a presentation on this? We're up to Resolution twenty-three oh eight.
Good evening, everyone. So tonight, we have a, a request for a conditional use permit from, uh, Mr. John Foley. Uh, he has some property that's at fifty-one forty-nine Wakema Road, and he'd like to use it as a short-term business rental. Um, the house is three thousand three hundred and seventy-two square feet. It's located on thirteen point five three acres, and it's situated on the map and eye. This did go before the planning commission and was approved on January third, when they held their public hearing. Uh, Mr. Foley, um, as well as in the ordinance, um, have added some conditions that they would like to, but put as part of their CUP. Uh, screen all potential guests and prohibit the following: large gathering, pets, and group of guests under age twenty-five. Maintain a ring doorbell with camera at the front of the property to ensure the above. Keep the nightly rate at or over five hundred per night, and a nightly minimum of at least two nights. Require guests to agree to rules prohibiting the above. Remove all trash from the property immediately following each rental, or more frequently, should the rental period be over one week. Keep the property maintained at all times, including hiring local businesses for housekeeping, landscaping, and other maintenance. The applicant will maintain a business license, and all guests will park in the driveway, which can comfortably hold all guest vehicles. The property will meet all building codes for rental units, and the applicant understands that the county may inspect the home once per year. The property, um, address will be placed in a position that is plainly legible from the street. There will be no recreational vehicles. No occupancy less than overnight will be allowed. The property. No occupancy less than overnight will be allowed. The property owner's name and telephone number will be posted. The principal guest shall be at least twenty-five years of age. The maximum number of guests shall be limited to six adult guests. And the applicant will remit any applicable lodging tax to the county. He also will not have any, um, recreational water craft, motorized water craft that will be there. Um, at our meeting, we did have several people speak out with, uh, concerns. We did, uh, they did meet with Mr. Foley. Um, Mr. Foley tried to, uh, resolve some of the issues. Um, some of the issues may have been resolved, but there, there are still some concerns that the, the guests there may cause noise or traffic or trespass onto their property. So I think Mr. Foley is putting up a fence between him and one of his neighbors. This is on aerial view of it. And that's the plant of the property. So that's, uh, looking out towards the river. Um, I know that, uh, Mr. Foley is here as well as some of his neighbors.
Can we go back to the, uh, line, the two properties and the line with it. Looks like it's kind of right, right through the back of the
Plant, I think it's really.
The, on the south side of this. Is it really going that close to the property or is it just in that?
This, this is G I F. It's not a hundred percent accurate. It's, it's a good tool, but that's not the actual property line. So it may be over just a little bit.
So this property is pretty much entails two adjoining property owners? Okay, and I assume they are.
Um, one I know is, I'm not sure of the other one. I, I know there were several people that spoke at the planning commission that are here.
And again, and I know you know the answer, but we have nobody to enforce any of these things, just like we're dealing with warning coordinate.
Um, it would be on complaint generated if we receive three complaints, then we can, um, cancel out his, um, short-term business rental.
Okay. Well, what it states is verified. So how do, how do you verify the complaint? So say that someone is inadvertently trespassing, it is a complaint. By the time anybody gets there to see that, you're not going to see that individual trespassing. So would that be, that would be an unverified complaint?
Trespassing sometimes is going to be harder unless, um, the sheriff's office can verify that it happened.
And you've got to have a profession of being on the property or signs and I'm sure none of them, none of the three of them will put up no trespassing signs all the way into property.
I would like to, uh, go on with the public hearing and then maybe ask some more questions if, if possible to, unless somebody else has some more.
Not good proceeding right now, but yeah, we'll. We'll discuss.
And still limited to three minutes and identify yourself, uh, and hear you. And if your neighbors probably wouldn't hurt to mention that. And I'll open that public hearing then.
Uh, good evening, everyone. My name is John Foley. This is my wife, Ruby, uh, and our property is fifty-one forty-nine Wakima. Um, we purchased the home at the beginning of twenty twenty-one, uh, and we, we love it. We love spending our time there. Um, it is, to be clear, while we are filing for a, uh, business applicant, application, this is our part-time home as well, um, and we treat it as such. The, as we pointed out, the, the property does sit on over thirteen acres. Um, there's gorgeous views of the, of the water. It's surrounded by woods on both sides. Um, and it's a four-bedroom property. It's very nice. So the pictures show all that. We live in Chesterfield. I know that, um, you know, one point that will be made is that we are not local. Um, I don't think that we're, again, running a business from far away. We're just over an hour away and we have, um, plenty of local contacts, including one person who's designated to be like our emergency resource. Um, West Point resident who can run over and, and help address any, anything that comes up. Um, we have put a lot of our, you know, blood, sweat and tears into this property. We unknowingly, uh, in trying to do all right things, we unknowingly were, um, renting this house in twenty twenty-two. Uh, so all of twenty twenty-one, we stayed there the majority of the time. Twenty twenty-two began to use it as short, short-term when we didn't spend our time there. My wife diligently trying to make sure that the tax dollars were being properly allocated, uncovered the need for this license and began the, the process. But what that does mean is that, um, we had more than thirty stays in twenty twenty-two. Um, and I know we've submitted a lot of information. I don't know if everybody had a chance to review it all, but, um, you'll find that they're all five-star reviews and there are people who have fallen in love with the community, just like we have. Um, many who want to return and have already booked to return in the coming years. Um, you'll also find a lot of, um, letters of support from, uh, local business owners. Um, and I know there was a mention about, you know, signage. Um, we did complete the fence already to, to, um, to help, uh, ease one of the bonderons' concerns. But we are, we've, we have, um, like a map that's inside the book that people see. They understand, to understand what the property lines are. And then we direct all of our guests to local businesses, uh, which is highlighted in there as well. And if you want to add anything.
Um, yeah, I just want to add that we did complete the fence today. It's a one hundred and eighty foot privacy fence that will run between our property and our neighbor's property. So hopefully that helps relieve some of their concerns and give them peace of mind. We actually, um, just completed it today and or I killed sleep, we're still talking. And the, the other thing I wanted to mention, I don't know how familiar you all are with short-term rentals, but the platform that we use to attract guests and vet them, like payments and all of that is called, um, VRVO. We think it attracts a high-quality guest. Um, we charge seven hundred dollars a night staying in a home. So these are people who are spending, you know, thousands of dollars to spend a vacation here. And I'm happy to walk through our vetting process or anything like that if you have questions, but I also put it on.
There, there are guidelines laid out, you know, by VRVO, um, in, you know, running a short-term rental on their platform. There were guidelines that were, uh, set in place, um, here by the county and we have exceeded all of them. Um, and really, you know, kind of gone out of our way to make sure that, um, while we understand not everybody's going to be happy about everything, we're doing everything we can to, to ease any concern. Um, and, and I don't want that to go unnoticed, so.
Sherry mentioned that you have no, uh, water craft at all for anybody to use, but you still advertise kayaks, but.
To, to be clear, the concern that came up in the planning commission meeting was, um, you know, people bringing boats to the dock and everything, and that we have a, we have a boat lift and we have our boat and our jet ski that are there. Um, so there was a concern that, that those would be made accessible to people who rented the house. There was verbiage in the listing about, um, you know, it is a boating community and there's, you know, public access to the Matapanai River there. Um, but we removed any, you know, any of that from our listing. Um, and then we've, you know, just made it clear if there's some, I think there's a picture submitted like, um, obviously I don't give my boat keys to anybody, but, um, the boat lift is also, um, the, the power is secure. It's off. There's no, there's no way to use it, so.
Yeah, but power weren't raised was an issue during planning. I think that they.
No, I'm just going by your advertisement and, and, and reading it and I'm not getting into how much you charge a night, but you don't have seven hundred on there. It's five hundred.
It, it depends on the night that you look at.
But I mean, in the middle of summer, it's not.
In the middle of summer, it's seven hundred. Yeah. Average and, and we can pull like a ledger of everything, I mean, the average last year.
Yeah, it doesn't matter to me.
Yeah.
I, I'm just saying, I did look at it. I put in the dates to see what it, how it ran.
Yeah, it might not be fully updated right now. We've blocked all dates.
Right, okay, but that's not an issue.
Mr., Mr. Chair, if I may, you mentioned you had thirty stays in twenty twenty-two. How does that correlate with, uh, what was different with what you're asking for now and what you were doing then? Was it driven by a violation? Is, is that why we?
No, it's not at all. It was nothing more than, um, my wife, again, just she called in to make sure that, you know, the tax money that is collected was being, you know, properly allocated. And at that point she learned about the, the need for the short-term business license. So we began that process immediately.
To answer your question, dealing with that, most of that goes to the state. We get, I think, one percent that it sells that.
Yeah, that's correct. And it gets permitted directly by Verbo. We don't have any. That's why I was calling to make sure that.
I didn't think you knew where it was going or, or who had.
We wanted to make sure that it was being sent in. That was the concern.
Oh, is this intended to be a full-time rental property or?
Absolutely not. No, I mean, um, we, we spend a lot of time with our family there. Um, we could, you know, our kids love it. Our, it become like, you know, I've got a very large extended family and it's, I mean, because of my phone, just constant requests for like, hey, can we come, you know, to another family weekend there? Um, you know, we've done holidays there. I mean, it's, it's very much our home, so.
Probably, bro, you didn't know your head.
Come out of the woodwork, right?
Mr. Chair.
Something, um, also like they, they mentioned earlier in their statement that they are trying to follow the rules now. Once they found out that they were in non-compliance, they took the initiative to file this conditional use permit and was brought to our attention from the, uh, adjoining landowners and the neighbors that many of their neighbors are doing this illegally. So, and as we all know, King William is a complaint-driven county, and so they haven't been turned in yet. But these, this couple is trying to rectify, once they found out that they should have had the conditional use permit and they filled out all the applications and tried and worked with that meetings with the neighbors and trying, or I think they're diligently trying to work out the issues.
And, and, and I agree a hundred percent with what you're trying to do. My problem is on our side. We have nobody to enforce this or go out in the middle of the night when the complaints are being generated on the weekends. And we're in litigation now, you know, so.
Yeah, I do, you know, we can, again, we can talk about the whole, the process and, and how we vet the people that come in, but, um, you know, as part of this process, we installed an additional camera just to make sure that our, you know, the entire perimeter of our property incoming was covered. We know exactly who is coming and confirm that the people that said they are coming are the ones that are coming. The, you know, the guidelines that the county is set for should make it where, you know, we're not bringing in large parties anyway. Uh, so we'll vote the line there. Uh, we don't want that on the property, but my wife will tell you, we get plenty of requests for, you know, weddings. Um, people want to hold a wedding on the property over the river and we turn every single one of them down. Um, that's not how we want our property tried to.
You said it, what, ten? People, ten people is that?
It's six adults. That's set by the county. Um, and then we don't allow an additional.
You're listing that on six, too.
It says that it bleeds twelve and then in the description it says that that can only be six adults and six can be children. The house has four bedrooms and then it has this big kids locker and so that's been a big draw for, yeah. And with respect to enforcement, I understand your point and I'd be happy to talk more about it, but from our perspective, all we can really do.
Really not your responsibility.
Follow the rules and do our best. And I mean, nobody wants this to be more than us. We certainly don't want to be in litigation or even, you know, in an uncomfortable situation with our neighbors.
And when we approve these things, we, it isn't the fault. It's whoever comes along in the future, you know. It's got to work better to, and it, and it sounds like if this continues, we don't have to hire somebody to do this stuff.
On, uh, page fifty of our binder here, what it says is the principal guest shall be at least twenty-five years of age. This last document says principal guest shall be at least. Okay, no, twenty-five. The first one says eighteen. So which is?
If I can clarify, the county says that the guests must be over eighteen. Our own personal rules say they have to be twenty-five.
Right, the ones renting.
Yeah, the primary renters. So there can be, you know, children or whoever.
I guess we'll find out this in a few minutes, but, uh, during the meetings with, uh, Ms. Rose and, and, and the bonderons, were they, uh, satisfied with what's being done?
Uh, I, I think I'll let them speak to it. Um, I don't know that Ms. Rose has any real objection that was addressable. Like there's concern that, you know, she has, uh, pre-ranged chickens and if somebody brought a dog, the dog could wander off the property and go attack the chickens. But I mean, we don't allow pets. Um, and, and Ms. Rose is not the, that's not her primary residence. Um, so she's not there. I, I don't know of any other concerns that we haven't addressed. So the bonderons are the ones who are on the south side of the, the map there that we've had, um, the, we, we had, um, their concern is in the ways of court, well, security, uh, in the ways. And, um, again, we've installed the additional camera. We've gone through our process for vetting the people that come on. We built the fence, um, which, you know, doesn't provide security. It's a privacy fence in the woods. But, um, I think it does hopefully bring, um, some ease to the dogs. They don't see things through the woods, whether it's us or one of our guests, um, and get excited. Um, and then we moved, um, just a free fire pit and chairs. We moved that to the other side of the property. So I, am I missing anything that?
Um, I think those were the main points. I will just say with, um, respect to noise, we haven't heard any complaints during twenty twenty-two. So we, to us, if everything was, um, fine, it's inevitable that there's going to be a little bit of noise. I think probably a lot of the noises that they heard were actually us with our family there and not necessarily short-term renters. Um, but we did try to alleviate that by, again, moving our fire pit, which is pretty big, like gathering spot and these things to the side of our property that is away from us.
All right, um, I, I think before I have any more questions for them, I would like to hear from, uh, yeah, and then, uh, we could kind of aggregate all the data.
If we need you back.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, I will open the public hearing. And state your name in your, either your address or your district.
Hey, um, my name is Sibyl Rose. That's S I B Y L. Um, I've been a King William resident since two thousand and one. I bought forty-nine eighty-five Wakima Road, which is next door to the property. Um, I also own, um, four hundred and fifty acres right across the road from this property. So I'm next door and I'm across the road and my full-time residence is thirty-six fifty-six Custis Mill Pond Road, which is in my large pine plantation. Um, I'm at Wakima every day. Um, whether I'm a full-time resident there or not, um, I don't think is, um, should have any bearing on this. I'm concerned about, um, a lot of things that have, that have been brought up. I want to state for the record that I totally object to the approval of this conditional use permit. I want to state for the record that I totally object to the approval of this conditional use permit as it's presented at this time. Um, rest assured, I haven't come to three meetings to say that I'm in support of it. Um, there are no pros for me or benefit to me at all, and there's only cons on this situation. Um, whenever there's renters, there's, there's gonna be problems, I have. One rental property now, when I bought it, my wise mother looked at me and said, you're asking for trouble. So I'm sure most of the time I think things might be okay, but my concern like yours is about enforcement. And it shouldn't be on the shoulders of the, of the neighbors. Um, I don't want to be spying to see when there's twenty people or complain about the noise. I can see the house from my property, I can certainly hear them, and I have a lot of valuables there as well. Um, they've stated they had thirty rentals, if they only rented to six, that's a hundred and eighty people. Most of them, they told me were out of state, I don't know what kind of screening they do, I doubt if they do background checks. Um, I've had various problems, um, consistently over the fifteen years that I've had the acreage with. Um, trespassers that go right past posted signs, um, I've had vandalism assorted things and. I'm very concerned about what will happen with this short-term rental to me as well as the neighborhood. I mean, it was a peaceful and quiet place, and I, I don't want that to, to change. Um, I will probably have to do more posted signs. And more fencing, um, to make sure my property is secure. The issue, the dogs, um, I'm not, the fact that they have a rule, no dogs, um, who's gonna stop them? If the folies are an hour and a half away, I just don't know who's gonna enforce it.
Three minutes.
Um, even hunting dogs, they're not supposed to run on Sundays, people run them. Um, so, excuse me?
At, at your three, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's all I want to say, I would like them to, the planning commission to reconsider. Coming up with a, a tighter plan, um, that can be enforced and. And make sure that this isn't gonna have a negative bearing on the neighborhood, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Gentlemen, my name is Henry Sutherland, I'm in two oh seven four Custis Mill Pond Road. Uh, some of you have heard the, the. The, the problems that we as a, as a very rural, um, very residential neighborhood have. With the idea of, of uncontrolled strangers rolling in. I don't many, I don't know if you all had a chance to see Sixty Minutes last Sunday. But there was a segment on the problems with Verbos in California. Uh, that had gotten so out of control that basically they had to pass laws and rules. That required that anyone that operated a Verbo had to be a licensed real estate agent. Only because there was just nobody to call when problems happened, uh, there was nobody on site to look after things. Uh, and I'm sure there's plenty of other reasons you can think of, my, my concern is this, we're zoned rural. And what you just heard is, uh, the folies are putting together a house. That rents on a daily basis, uh, they said they had thirty rentals last time. Well, that, that's not exactly, uh, residential, that's not the same thing as a boarding house, that's not the same thing as short-term rental. Short-term rental may be the definition of that needs, needs to be at least reconsidered here in King William County. A day-to-day rental is, is not residential, that's commercial. And if you're gonna operate a commercial facility, no different than a motel or hotel or whatever, in the middle of a residential area. Apparently you, uh, need to have some, some regulations or at least abide by whatever the commercial requirements are. Uh, so I'll leave that for your consideration, maybe, maybe what we need to do is take another look at the definition of short-term rental. Uh, day-to-day doesn't sound like short-term to me, that sounds like day-to-day. But my thoughts for your consideration in any case.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Gentlemen, my name is Laura Bondurant, I live at five two five five Wakema Road. I'm a resident. In the county of King William for forty years. We lived at our house that we built for twenty-nine years, thirty years in November. We are against this short-term, um, rental agreement. We made that known at both zoning meeting. However. We recognize times change, we recognize that the county wants to grow, uh, particularly with. Rural agricultural tourism. We recognize that there are quite a few people that want to have wedding venues in our county. And we recognize that there are no hotels, so a logical extension is these short-term rentals. Given that, I am asking you, for the zoning commission, whomever it is, I'm not. In government, I don't understand all of the specifics, however. The regulate, the ordinance that was read is rather thin. In my opinion. Um, you have, uh, section eighty-six dash two-ten under. E, use of regulations, number four. The principal guests of the short-term business rentals shall be at least eighteen pairs of age. Come on now, we know college kids like to party, we know college kids will sub the fuse. Have their parents rent out, come in, destroy a house. That is not an uncommon situation. We know that the, under section eighty-six two-ten F. The business license or cancellation regulation has been, um, noted before. If three or more substantiated complaints, i.e. noise or trash. Are made within a twelve-month period. That the license can be suspended. What is substantiated complaints? Noise, when your noise ordinance states it shall be unlawful. For any person to make, continue or cause to be made or continue any loud, unreasonable or unusual noise. Or any noise which disturbs, injures or endangers the comfort, repose, that's an important one to me, guys. Health, peace, safety of others within the county. How is a deputy going to in, implement that? You've already mentioned the trespassing, how is a deputy going to know when there are flags around the poverty? Does that mean I have to take a picture, try to find Sasquatch? I think. These need to be tougher rules because it's gonna grow, I think you need to take a look at some of the other counties. Hanover County has a very nice ordinance, noise ordinance. New Kent County has definable voice decibels. That's, that's can be measured, that can be noted. So I would like you to please consider stronger language. I have others recommendations, but I'm not going to bore you with those. But we do worry about the safety, the noise levels. And most of all, who's going to enforce this? I would like to see some sort of language regarding property management. This person in West Point, be there at every single one, make sure that people that say are renting. Are renting, make sure there are no recreational vehicles, make sure there are no electrical watercraft that are going into the water. I would really like you to pause and strengthen these ordinances. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks.
Hi, I'm Betsy Mountcastle, and thank you for hearing me. Um, my husband and I live at twenty-three oh six Custis Mill Pond Road, we are south. About three properties down from this particular, um, request for the short-term. Uh, request in the zoning for the short-term rentals, and I would like to. Concur with what Laura Bondurant has already brought forward, and also to. Try to impart that if one has chosen to be in a rural. Single-family dwellings for the number of years, twenty-two for us going on, um, actually going on twenty-four years. Where we know our neighbors, and we've chosen to be there in a space where we know the river. We know the swift currents of the river, we know the, the, the best ways of navigating the river and taking care of it. I just don't have faith that when you have a terno of, of maybe every weekend. Multiple of hundreds of people over a year who you do not know, and I know that the, the fact was made that VRBO. Um, vets, but I, I'd like to know how those individuals are vetted. And I also know that the person who, who rents. Very well may not be the person who comes to stay, nor those six, or perhaps they would rent and there would be. Um, maybe there'd be three adults and then all the rest could be teenagers, I just think that. The ability to enforce is not there, it's like putting. The cart before the horse, which also puts the board in, I think, a, um, a difficult position. And to whom do, who do we go to when we see something that isn't okay? And as was also stated, I, I, I don't want to be the enforcer, I'd like to live there just like you would, and I think if you were to put yourself. In our shoes, when you think about where you chose to live, would you want to? Knowing that you had chosen there because there were single-home dwellings in an area that you didn't know your neighbors. Would you want that every day wondering, Dan, who has come into your neighborhood? And when you see something, how, how do you react to that, where do you go, and I have yet to hear. A viable solution for that, I do think it would be really important to table this and. Take a look at how some other counties, particular, particularly those who have a rural, a rural population. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, members of the board, my name is Elliot Bondurant, I reside at fifty-two fifty-five Wakema Road. I am along with my wife on the south side of that property. You can stand on my front porch and look through the woods and see their houses less than probably seventy-five yards. There are some woods on the portion of it, and I will admit that the folies have put up a fence along part of that property line. But it doesn't go all the way down. The problem that I foresee in this situation has already been brought up, but I just want to reiterate it. There is no vetting on who rents this property. The folies don't know who those people are, they get a credit card and they say they've got to be twenty-five years of age. Well, y'all all know, and the point's already been brought up, people can sign a short-term lease and prove that they're twenty-five. But that doesn't mean that that person is the one that's actually gonna be coming into the house, and who's gonna have to enforce it? You're putting the burden on my wife and I, and Ms. Rose, and anybody else in that neighborhood. This neighborhood has been there for over thirty years, you've got homes that are. Half million dollars or more in value, some probably close to a million. And you're putting us in a position that I've got to spy on my neighbors to see how many people are over there, how old are they, what are they up to? That's not fair to us, it's really not fair to them either. And then, if, who do I call if something happens? Twelve o'clock at midnight, I call the sheriff's department. They've probably got one person on duty that night, what if he's at the upper end of the, or she's at the upper end of the county? This could be an hour before they get there, and then a verifiable complaint? What am I gonna do, go across over there and count how many people are there and take pictures of them? I've already had one person trespassing on my property. You need to think about this before you just go willy-nilly and approve it. There are too many issues that are outstanding, and I'd ask for that consideration, and, and we are opposed to it. Yes, we did meet with folies, and yes, we did voice some concerns to them, and yes, I will admit they have tried to address some of them. I'm not gonna stand here and tell you otherwise. But there's no enforcement in this situation, none. You don't have anybody in the county specifically for this purpose, and I think you're opening up a big, major can of worms. And I would ask you strongly not to accrue, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you, I'm Dennis Mountcastle. I live at, uh, twenty-three oh six Custis Mill Pond Road, my wife spoke previously. I'm gonna keep my comments short because I think you've heard, uh, most of them, but. To proceed with no regulations or very few regulations. None that have been compared to any of the other locality nearby, and then not have any way of enforcing them. Just sounds dangerous. As we pointed out, we, we all live in a very rural area, most of the lots are ten acres or more. And yet, this home is within a stone's throw of the next-door neighbor. People have already come off of that property and onto the next. They don't know where they are, nobody's told them where to go. And, uh, I just, I would like for the board to give some serious consideration to. Studying, researching what other localities have done. And if you do pass it, at least make sure that you have the means to enforce it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I close this public here.
Yes, sir. I would like, I wish I could ask each one that came up to talk, are there any conditions you would accept? If we were to impose other communities' requirements, satisfy your concerns? Are there any conditions you would accept us allowing the folies to continue? And I don't think I can do that, but I'm not sure procedure. For Mr. Chair, I would recommend that we send this back to the planning commission for another look.
I agree with table or turn it down, one or the other, uh, until we have personnel that can enforce. The deputies are not trained, they just not, and I don't, we won't send them there next time.
My biggest problem is. Being. On, on odd man out on the solar farm, odd man out on that private airstrip, no one listening to adjoining landowners. These things are called conditional use. These things are called conditional use permits for a reason. And I'm a firm believer in listening to adjoining, adjoining landowners. I think this is an opportunity to maybe draw the line here. You know, whether we vote on it tonight or send it back to the planning commission and they can look at it again. Maybe look at, it was some really good points made. We're looking at 18 years of age. It should be much higher. You know, bad things can happen here and these people have been living here a long time. And it makes no difference to me whether it's waterfront property or whether it lies in landbound property in agricultural area. We need to listen to the people that are going to be directly affected by it.
And I'll be honest with you, I know of situations where the parents went down and rented and then let the kids take over. I knew that for a fact.
Right, so Mr. Chairman, I think we've got, we've got two distinct issues, I think. And I think the first is, you know, what we do with this application here. And I think what we heard tonight is pretty clear that whatever came out of the planning commission is not satisfied adjoining landowners to the point that I think we can feel good about moving forward with it in any way, shape or form. And I think the second distinct issue is that the short term rental language, that's, that's quite new. And again, it's this whole, this whole industry into King William County is fairly new, needs some attention. And I think we need to devote some, some efforts and resources into, into updating that. Perhaps using this as a, as a good example of things we can and can't use. And I think also before we go out and engage another consultant on the matter, let's, let's do what was suggested. And let's, let's discuss this with our neighbors that have a bit of experience with it and see what's worked for them and see if we can model some of what we use off of that. I'm not going to step on Mr. Greenwood's toes if he has any comments, but that's.
We have already had, I'm looking at on this, and we had the same issues before. And like I said, that's why we came up with almost 20 conditional uses on here. We were trying to reach everybody's issues on here. This is not willy nilly. We've been doing this for a long time. And you, everybody keeps using the ordinance. The ordinance says 18. We have to go by what the ordinance says. We changed it and changed it to 25 because we know that it can't be enforced to 18. But if you, we're not going to be able to enforce anything in this county. That's the problem. We know that already. Nobody's going to be able to do anything because this is a complaint driven county. You complain about stuff, that's when you get stuff done. People don't complain, we don't know. And like they said, the people that have been doing it already are going to get away with it. They're going to keep doing it. So it's, we're going to penalize the Foleys because they tried to do the right thing and paid $2,500 to get a permit that we may deny when the other people aren't doing anything and they're still doing it. But that's neither here nor there. Like I said, but this, the planning commission went over this very thoroughly. And like I said, there are A through P conditional uses that we tried to change to meet the requirements. And like I said, they, we tried to go over everything that the neighbor said by having somebody there, by posting the address, by having a telephone number. And like I said, nobody can do that. We can't do this with dogs and other stuff, noise ordinances with your neighbor. So if we can't do it with those people, we definitely can't do it with these. I understand that too. We're not here to do enforcement. We can't. We don't have enough money. We don't have enough money in this county to do what we need to do. But that's neither here nor there either. So they've met the requirements, they follow the rules, we've come up with conditional uses. And they're, we've gone with sharing. We asked what other counties do. But that's not what our ordinance said. We can't change the ordinance mid, mid-application.
Well, I mean, nothing changes the fact that it's a conditional use permit, as, as Mr. Mr. Garber pointed out.
And as I stated in the other planning commission, if they get three black marks, they will lose the permit. And like everybody, peeps thrown out, oh, oh, signified permits, I mean, or whatever ordinance is doing. We can find out if they're bad enough, they will, it will get taken away. But that doesn't seem to be good enough either, so. Try to come up with some more things, but I don't know what.
Well, I, I don't know. You bring, I mean, you bring up some interesting points about whether or not this works in certain zoning districts, right? I, I think that's worth exploring as well.
And we can change it, but like I said, we've already gone through all the ordinance and changed them majorly. And like I said, they're still.
Well, I know, we did a wholesale change, but that doesn't, you know, that doesn't mean you nail every single one, right? And if we did have a huge, so, all right, here, all right. I'm thinking as we go right here, as we discuss, when we had, you'll recall anybody, I think it was just misagreement enough. Nonetheless, when we had an issue with self interference, remember we, we just stopped taking applications on for a while and sort of that the order. And maybe what we need to do is send this back to the planning commission. All right, for, for them to look at this and then further study the issue in general. If you bring up a valid point and that if, if there are ones that are operating outside of the permits, they need to be notified that they're operating outside of the permit. So maybe we need to do a verbal search tomorrow and notify every property owner that's got a listing on there. Nope, until you get a permit. Seems reasonable. We've got nothing. We've talked about, well, I'm saying, you talked about not being able to enforce because no one's complaining. We've got a, we've got a ready to go website that we can just search. All right, and there it is. And there's your violators. All right, let's, let's get those violators notified that it's, it's not happening. Yeah, all right, well, all right, well, we need to move that forward. But I think the applicant wanted, wanted to say another thing, Mr. Chairman, if you want to have them.
Just, just one more thing. We still are missing the point of who is going to enforce. If we're not going to hire anybody to enforce it, I don't know.
Now, we're, we're having a whole, this, this, well, look, the short term rental issue is not a, a unique issue to King William County. Anybody that follows the news of these things knows, that knows that it's been a cascading issue from, you know, relating to homeless, that's relating to property values, relating to property management, on and on and on the list goes. So, you know, we, we took a crack at the zoning ordinance writ large here recently. And we incorporated this in there. Obviously it needs work. So if that includes discussion on whether or not it, it can comply in any way with certain zonings, that's probably a discussion to have when we get through it. Because it may be the case that when you get into RR, you just can't. It, it just, there's no way to guarantee the, the management and the maintenance and the free from disturbance of the property. Maybe there is, but I, I certainly don't.
Well, like I said, we do have a use matrix and they meet the use requirements. That is allowed in that particular use matrix. We can change the use matrix and not allow anything anywhere. But right now, that can be allowed if.
Just before you start, Percy, can y'all see what a code of enforcement person runs next month or whatever?
Sure.
You know, your calls. And apparently if these are becoming this large, instead of just moving themselves, like we're losing the other tax, would you call it, I forget.
Well, yeah, we're thinking about that too.
Mr. Foley, if I may, you mentioned 30 stays in 2022. Exactly how many days was that? Do you know?
I don't know, but we have a three day minimum typically. So a lot of those days were a full week. And we actually like those days, with large families.
So it could be as much as two thirds of the year?
No, I, we, I'm only struggling to remember the exact number of days, but if I called it 180, I'm probably within 10 days, either way.
Cause most of yours, some.
The stays.
The stay.
Yeah, summer, right now would be a period where we wouldn't see a lot of, of folks, but you know, spring and through the fall, really.
It's all based on the different, summer break is what they have. What draws them to the area a lot is Williamsburg, Banktown, Bush Gardens, all that. So they spend the week at our home. They spend a few days doing their thing, their timing of time.
Yeah, and, and Mr. Greenwood, I appreciate your comments. The, um, we, we did take this to the planning commission. The concerns from the community were heard and we paused then to address those. And that's when we came up with a significant number of additional conditions. And, you know, I just want to highlight again, we, we agreed to all of these conditions. It does feel a little unfair to continue to move the, the goalpost on us when these were the guidelines that are set out by the community. We're, we're meeting all of them or exceeding them. And, you know, I do see the opportunity for us to work, you know, with you to help, you know, if you do want to change guidelines in the future, if you do want to explore more taxes, like we have no problems being the guinea pig, you know, to, to help out here. But, you know, this is our home. Again, I've got to highlight that this is, this is our home as well, so.
So Mr. Foley, are you recommending that we vote on this tonight?
I, I'm recommending to approve it. But I, no, I, I am recommending that it is approved because we have met all of the, the guidelines. And we understand that, you know, if there are complaints, that's, that does fall on us. We have the opportunity to lose this and that, that's not something that we take lightly, so. Yeah, it feels like pushing it back to the planning commission would be unfair to the planning commission and to us.
So you would like to see us vote on it tonight?
Unless there is, I haven't heard anything that is, we need to go and explore something that is related to our application. You know, I understand that there are concerns with additional Airbnbs that may be operating in the community. That's not my, that's not my problem. Like I didn't, I'm not the one doing that. And I'm trying to do the, the right thing here. And we did pause and we did address the concerns. And I hope they're to, you know, if, if they can't, I know everybody may not be fully satisfied, but we've really gone out of our way to, to try and address concerns, so. And again, I mean, you know, I know that it was outside of, you know, compliance that we were doing this last year. We're, we're right here telling you that, but there were over 30 stays. You've got a list of letters from local businesses who have enjoyed the, the folks who have been coming in. You've got reviews, you worry about, you know, things like the vetting process. Look at the reviews. I mean, they're all about Ruby as much as they are about West Point and, and their time in the community, so.
And, and on the vetting, I, I don't think it's quite fair to say that we have no vetting process whatsoever. We don't allow people to submit books. So when they submit a request for booking, we are of course, you know, checking their name, checking their age, checking people on a party, you know, starting a conversation with them. Where are you from? What brings you to the area? They're typically saying, we're going to, you know, Bush Gardens, we're going to Williamsburg, we're going to spend some time on the river. We also then require them to agree to all of our house rules. I probably check a few of them on social media just to make sure they are who they say they are. And, you know, when they book, they have to buy property damage insurance. They have to pay a cleaning fee, they have to pay the high margin rate. And we have cameras at the house, so. So far, so good, I would like to say, but there's not much reason for people to spend that amount of money to book the house when they can be booted out for a car rule. There's our tenants who have property rights, but it takes a long time to evict. If something goes wrong, we consider booking and it's resolved.
Mr. Chairman, do you have legal counsel here? Maybe we could ask, have you had any experience with anything like this in other counties? Or have you heard of anything or how they could have been?
It's true, it's truly an à la carte situation. Every, every locality has its zoning authorities and can define the short term rental stay, how they'd like to define it. They can enforce it, how they'd like to enforce it. So there's not really a one size fits all. I mean, each community has different needs from a, you know, land use plan in a standpoint. So I can't, I can't provide sort of an overall guide, but.
Another thing I'd like to say is, you know, with the third hand, we absolutely love it, we cherish it. We are more focused than anyone on making sure that we get the guests in there. You know, say something happens and a bunch of 18 year olds throw a party. I don't see that happening, but the first thing they would destroy would be our house. We are not looking to have that happen. We do everything we can to protect our property. We feel that that would triple over protecting local property as well.
And, and Mr. Chair, I, I'd just like to say that, and I'm appreciative of the, it's obvious that, that you are making an effort, that you're meeting with, with neighboring properties and, and the effort's appreciated. I, I just think in this, in this instance, we've, we've got a situation where it is a conditional use permit. Okay, there's, there's no way around that. It's not, it's not a by right. All right. And the, the purpose of the conditional use permit is to allow for exactly what we've got here. And there's a reason that it's heard twice as well, once in the planning commission stage and the once before us. You know, the planning commission stage often offers an opportunity to hear concerns, address them. And then I would say typically if there are concerns that are, you know, brought up at the planning commission hearing, most of the time by the time it gets to us, those, those concerns have largely been worked out. We've got a situation here where not a single neighbor is in favor.
Well, we're surprised that they have not been worked out. We've worked, I think, very hard with the bottom rungs, but typically, again, you know, the rooms, we've not had a sufficient place and stuff. We did meet with her, she complained about some other neighbors, like nothing about us specifically. And then the Mount Castle, I hadn't heard before. I understand that they look a few properties away, but they don't want short term rentals in general. I don't know what we can do for them.
I, I understand, and I think, yeah.
Hard for us to say what we can do to help somebody that we haven't met who's several properties.
It's a point well taken. But I think if anything to discussion tonight maybe has revealed that we've got some work to do on our ordinances as well. I think that's, that's clear.
We could table it with ourselves and see, maybe talk with other counties to find out. We could add some additional, but like I said, there's no way we can do any kind of enforcement because we can't do any, any kind of enforcement on any of our ordinances.
Well, and Mr. Chairman, Mr. Greenwood's point, I'm perfectly happy to move that we refer this back to the planning commission, but it doesn't sound like that's.
I don't think more law is going to do it until you've got somebody that's going to enforce in the bottom line. Let's say here.
And, and I've always been on the page of listening to adjoining landowners, as I said, whether it's, it's on the river, whether it's a piece of property that's AC somewhere else. Conditional use permits are here for us to have a good discussion and make a decision. And I lean towards adjoining landowners, I always will. Now, if they could work out something and agree to it, certainly, I wouldn't have a problem with it. But I'll go on record right now and say that from this point forward, if adjoining landowners don't want this specific thing, I will vote against it.
Use that mentality, it's, and everybody says they don't want it in their backyard. I mean, the adjoining landlord is always going to not want it. Nobody's ever said that they want something that somebody else wants. I've never heard of it, but that's neither here nor there either, but. But I don't think.
Yeah, I, I understand that there's like a, a fear of the unknown. And it's not unknown, I don't think, in this situation because there have been.
We have dealt, we know there's no enforcement.
Well, I, I do think any, anything that you have dealt with in the past is dissimilar in that this property is unique. It's not a small Airbnb property. This is a vacation rental home. So I do appreciate that, like, there may have been some concerns, but I don't think they're, they're similar to this property and, and the type of people that stay here.
I told you a, a little while ago, this is not the Foleys committee.
Yep.
This is an ordinance to handle all of these. But the thing is, I don't care what we write, if we don't have anybody to enforce it, it's a waste, it's a wasted time. It's a book laying over here doing that.
I, I would, you know, if there's, if there's something tangible for us to address, I would love to have that discussion. But I.
Well, in my opinion, it's more what we need to do.
It's presuming an assumption that violations will occur.
Yeah, that's, that's it.
We find that a little odd.
Well, society these days, it's true though. I mean, I agree with that, but that, that's nothing that we can control.
Very existence of an ordinance presumes that violations will occur, Mr. Green, but. Look, I, I'd hate to just deny this. I would rather give it some more time. But if there's another motion out there, I'll, I'll give it space, so.
People on the table, like there's no need to go back to planning commission. I think we should come up with the extra, whatever we need to come up with.
That's what the planning commission does.
Well, right, again, it's, it's two issues. But it's two issues. We have this application. Then we have the issue with yours. Okay, that's, so, yes, I agree, it is 100% different. And that is why everything that, that we're discussing with regards to this application, this is unique to this application and this application alone. Whether or not we think that there is room for them to work out the issues that, that their neighbors are concerned about to an extent where some version of this application could be approved in the future. If we believe that there is a possibility of that happening, then I would like to give it an opportunity to happen. And I would support a motion to either table or refer it back to the planning commission, whichever this board prefers. However, if it's just the belief that this is, is an issue of fundamental conflict in this particular neighborhood and that there's no opportunity for this to advance forward in any way, shape or form in the future, then it's best to just deny it and move on. We address the ordinance one way or another. Okay, the ordinance is an issue separate and apart from this application. Because the application that we have in front of us here, the, the problems aren't compliance with the ordinance, okay? Because the application that we have in front of us here, the problems aren't compliance with the ordinance, okay? The problem is compliance with the feel and fit and desire of the neighbor. Okay, so that's what we're dealing with in this application, not the ordinance. So when we think clearly on that, you know, and what action we want to take. So again, if there's no other motion to either approve or deny.
Mr. Foley, what do you want? I've asked you before, do you want us to move on this tonight, or do you want to see if something can be worked out between you and the other group for us to table it? Or do you?
Yeah, I think, so we've been down that path already. And I think, as we've highlighted, we've done an extraordinary amount to make sure we have addressed concerns. If there is something tangible, and Mr. Barbara, I know you've got the question, you know, asking what what conditions aren't included right now that would make, you know, the bond runts comfortable, then like, I'd love to have the discussion and understand, but as we stand right now, I feel like, you know, the goal line was presented to us, it got moved, we continued to, you know, meet or exceed all of the guidelines, and and we're still leaving without resolution.
No, I don't feel like the board has moved the goal line.
No, 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 no. I'm going through the planning commission process.
Make a motion that we table it down at least, because like I said, we're not getting anywhere here with this.
All right, table it, but what act? Would be my question.
To follow out more.
I would recommend that if the intent is to table it, be postponed to a date certain. And that has to be.
Within twelve months.
So if there's a, if you all want to, you know, hold a work session, talk about short-term rental ordinance in the interim, the action on the legislative application has to occur from the board supervisor within twelve months.
Well, we can't change the ordinance mid-application and make them follow a new ordinance. They have to be on what it was, right? Because otherwise, they have to fill out a new conditional use permit.
Correct, but it is a conditional use permit, so.
Right.
That again is my point. The ordinance work is separate from the application work, all right? The application work has everything to do with seeing if there can be agreement reached between the neighbors.
I think we should have a work session with all the neighbors. And that, but that's only we were gonna figure. You know, a work session with, to meet with the Foley's and the neighbors to try to work out some agreement to handle this particular conditional use permit, and then move on with changing, or it's like Travis said, stop after there's no, take no more applications.
I don't know that the board's role in this is mediator, all right? Our role is policymaking. I think if we give them sixty days from today to try to work out something with the neighbors, then that's something. Yeah, I don't know that we need to have.
I would agree with that.
Mediation meeting between the neighbors and the applicant, that's not. So when's the March meeting? My calendar's not accurately populated for some reason.
We've got a March, other than, we got a March thirteenth work session.
Well, let's make it the regular, I think it's sixty days.
Uh, the twenty seventh.
Okay.
Which is not a budget. I think we have a motion.
Is that your motion, Mr. Greenwood? Yes, okay.
In the discussion. I'm sorry, I just want to be clear what our takeaway is here, what.
Sixty days to work out with the neighbors, some other conditions that we can add to your particular conditional use permit to make people more happy. That's the best we can do. Either that, or it looks like it's.
I understand, it's just that.
Unfortunately, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. That's something. Afraid if we take the vote now, you're not gonna get anything. I hate to say it, but I would say probably take sixty days as well. I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair, is it, I get.
We also paid twenty-five hundred dollars.
I don't know if you make it.
I think, well, Mr. Chair.
This is turning into a free fall.
Yeah, I don't think that's how these hearings are typically conducted, and I think the neighbors have had an opportunity to conduct.
Motion in a second.
I agree.
Mr. Mustowski.
Aye to the motion.
Mr. Greenwood.
Aye.
Mr. Barber.
Aye.
Mr. Moran.
Aye.
Chairman Hodges.
Aye.
Sure, you gonna do anything on this one too? In the, the landowners, they're here.
The developers are all here.
So we have another request from MHF Properties LLC. They've applied for rezoning on one hundred and sixty-six point oh eight acres at the intersection of thirty and three sixty. Well-known as the Simon's property. The current property zoning is R1 suburban residential. The proposed development includes single-family detached multifamily townhomes and commercial tracks. They have offered proppers and they've revised their master plan as well. Included in this, they have a commercial track A that will be a minimum of fifteen acres and a maximum of thirty-three acres and will be limited to uses permitted by right in the B two.
Sure. I think sure, still take care.
Commercial track B. It's gonna be a minimum of eleven acres and a maximum of twelve acres. And that also will be limited to uses permitted by right in the B two district. The multifamily track is gonna be a minimum of nine acres and a maximum of twenty-seven acres. And the uses shall be limited to apartments, condos, townhomes, single-family detached recreation facilities that will be private, and picnic shelters or areas. They have a townhouse tract that will also be a minimum of twenty-five acres and a max of thirty acres. The uses will be limited to townhomes, single-family attached dwellings, single-family detached dwellings, private recreational facilities and picnic shelters in the area. They have a single-family track that's gonna be a minimum of fifty-four acres, a maximum of sixty-three acres, and be limited to single-family detached private recreation facilities and picnic shelters or areas. They also have a flex track, which is a minimum of three acres and a maximum of four acres. And that will be limited to those permitted at commercial track B and/or the townhouse track. And we have flex track B, it's gonna be a minimum of seven acres, a maximum of eight acres, and those uses are limited to detached, single-family, multifamily, convalescent facility, life care facility, daycare center, office general, office medical, private or public recreational facility, commercial indoor or outdoor sports and recreation, and a picnic shelter in an area. This did go before the planning commission on the third of January. And they did vote to recommend approval of the rezoning. In addition to some of the wording in the proppers, which come in lines up within the master plan, they have also submitted proppers one million dollars to be paid to the county prior to the issuance of fifty percent of the total allowable residential certificate of occupancies to provide infrastructure improvements for the King William recreational park. Or should the King William County impose impact fees at any time during the life of the development that are applicable to the property? The amount paid in cash propper shall be in lieu of or credited toward, but not in addition to any impact fees in a manner determined by the county. And the option of King William County cap should proppers may be reduced for the cost of off-site improvements to adjacent King William recreational park, including roads, parking lot, ballfields, indoor waterline provided by the applicant subdivision or assignees as determined by the county administrator or his assignees. It also includes wording on the road improvements, the density, the dwelling sizes, the architecture. Talks about the lighting, landscaping and buffers, building coverage setbacks, and the internal roadways. I do have a PowerPoint, but they have one as well. They're gonna probably be similar. We can briefly go over mine and then let them kind of go it a little bit together. So this is the aerial. And it is, it is gonna be on the north side and not the south side. And this is our future land use. And blown up a little bit, you can see that it is the future land use, especially for mixed use or PED. This is the features of the property. Right now, it's currently R1 and permitted by right is for them to build single-family, a major subdivision. Under the PED, it does provide for mixed use. It's supposed to provide for a walkable, pedestrian-friendly environment. That is what the developers are trying to do here.
Ms. Graham, I think I asked you Friday, under the by right, how many residences could they fit into this?
I did send it to Mr. Hodges. I'm sorry, I should have probably sent it to all of you. But it's approximately, and this is, it's hard to determine because there are contours, RPA, roads to take into account, but probably about three hundred and thirty homes.
And that's assuming twenty thousand square foot?
Actually, it's fifteen.
Fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand with public water and public sewer. Twenty thousand if they only had one or the other, and thirty thousand with neither public water or public sewer. Now, in that, they have to also provide a hundred foot of road drainage for each lot. And like I said, it's hard, you can't just take the total because you do have to take into consideration, they've got to cut out for the roadways, drainage, RPA. There are some contours in there that are pretty steep, they're not gonna be able to build on.
So what are the, what would the setbacks, setback requirements be? With the PED as compared to what they would obtain by right?
The, by right in the R1, it's forty feet on the front and rear and fifteen on the sides. They are proposing, under the PED, twenty-five feet front and rear, and I believe it's fifteen on the side. I know they have the layout that shows the difference. But they've got three different proposed setbacks. And they do list that also on number sixteen of their proppers. The minimum setback for all tracks shall adhere to the information provided in the report titled The Orchards at Central Garage, King William County Planning Unit Development, PUD, first dated November first, twenty twenty-two, and last revised January eighteenth, twenty twenty-three.
So, what, we'll go again.
Ms. Graham, from tonight, an approval, what happens next, or disapproval, what happens next?
If it's approved, the zoning has been approved. Now, that doesn't mean that the site plans have been approved. So they will have to go through all the site plan process. It will be up to them whether they do a full site plan or if they're gonna do it by parcel sections or by tracks. They may decide to do that.
If this is approved, I think I asked you this question. They're projecting six hundred and eighteen residences. So basically, if they choose to stick by that, that will be six hundred and eighteen. We won't have any authority to change that.
If we accept the proppers, what they've got listed in there, their density and so forth, would be part of the project.
My concern with the proppers are, the pross and rec is in a position of critical need for, you know, what we've talked about. And if I've heard it right, they're projecting to build that to be over ten years, period of time. So with what they're projecting, fifty percent of the residences or structures, or whatever you wanna call them, being completed prior to the dispersment of that one million dollars, that could be five years down the road. McCully Park is probably fifteen years old, and they're just coming down the home stretch line, so. Is it my understanding, am I understanding that right, fifty percent?
That's the way it reads under the cash proppers. Has to be paid prior to the issuance of fifty percent of the total liable residential certificate of occupancy.
Which would be three hundred and nine, somewhere around there.
If you did the changes in the park when they have to be built in with the streets at same time. On that, they need to loop in through the park, I understand, was part of that.
But we're not gonna get the proper money until fifty percent of this build-out is done.
But I mean, would they do that for?
Maybe, maybe, maybe upfront, I don't know.
Stay here.
Yeah, we can ask.
It does say prior to the issuance of fifty percent.
It's not after, it has to be paid prior to, before fifty percent is complete. So they can do it anytime before fifty percent.
But it has to be paid.
But it could be as late as.
Right, the day before.
Three hundred and eight. The way it's written, correct?
Mr. Mayor, I think in light of this portion of discussion, it might be time to get the applicant up.
If we will, and then we can pull their PowerPoint up as well.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. the Board, Mr. Ashcraft. My name is Anne Miller, a planner with Balzer and Associates, representing the applicant this evening. Before I get started on the presentation, I just want to make a few other introductions. Here with me from my office is Andy Scherzer, a landscape architect, and representative for the zoning case. Todd Chalmers, the head engineer for the project. We also have John and Jay Neparlo with MHF Properties LLC, the property owners and applicants, as well as Don Balzer with Branchway Development, and Eric Schorhacker with Greenlight Solutions, who did the traffic impact analysis. So they're here to answer any questions and help with the presentation. So as Sherry indicated, the property is located at the northern intersection of Route thirty and Route three sixty in Central Garage and was formerly owned by the Simon's family. MHF Properties LLC acquired the properties on the west side of Route three sixty, which totals roughly one hundred and sixty-six acres. The property is raw land, some of which had been farmed and some has remained forested. There are a few existing structures on the property that are proposed to be removed, and the subject property is currently zoned R1 suburban residential. Um, the comprehensive plan, um, which was recently adopted, updated and approved last year. Designates this area as mixed use plan unit development. So one of the notes in the comprehensive plan states that Central Garage is positioned as a major center for business and development. Along the busy Route three sixty corridor. This area is identified for continued growth with both businesses and residential uses. With that in mind, we are proposing to rezone the property to plan unit development P U D. With a mixture of commercial and residential land uses, all served by extension of the public. Public utilities and connected by roads and pedestrian systems while preserving existing environmental features on the property. So the report you received in your packet has all of the information regarding this proposal, including elements of the master plan. Design manual and community impact statement. We also submitted sign proper conditions that touch on aspects of the report and highlight key elements of the proposal. Um, the proposed P U D has a mixture of commercial and residential, as previously noted. Strategically located to fit within the existing character of Central Garage, while also considering the goals of the comprehensive plan. The larger commercial area, track A, is bishop positioned at the corner of Routes three sixty and thirty for high visibility. With additional commercial space along the frontage of three sixty. That commercial area, known as track B, is envisioned to accommodate different out parcels running three sixty with a commercial access road in the rear. To provide uh transitions between the commercial and residential tracks. We have uh buffers shown on the plan and proffered while um. And we've also concentrated the denser residential, including the townhouses and apartments. Um, directly behind the commercial with more traditional single family lots towards the rear of the property. After conversations with key key stakeholders in the county, we've also incorporated some flex tracks, which you can see in yellow and purple. To allow for a mixture of uses, depending on the market. And final engineering, it may be suited suited better suited to have different uses in those areas as outlined in proper condition three. Uh, would you show a few access points along Route three sixty and Route thirty to serve the development? Including a full access in the middle along Route three sixty that would act as the main access into the development. With a boulevard entrance sidewalks and landscaping to give an identity to this mixed use community. We also have a few stub connections, including access to the adjacent park. To connection to the adjacent apartment complex and a stubout shown on the right side of the master plan for a connection to future development. Um, as you can see, um, per the planned unit development um requirements. There will be interconnected roadways, pedestrian scale, streetscape with street trees. Houses and shallow shallow setbacks adjacent to sidewalks to promote community and connectivity. Different lot sizes to accommodate a range of housing styles and sizes. And programmable open space, including a dog park, focal points and a trail system for all residents to enjoy. As noted before, the development proposes a direct connection to King William County recreational park. To allow residents to access the public area in various ways, by vehicle, bike or walking. This is the master plan, um, just in a black and white version to show a bit more detail. Um, as you can see, along Routes three sixty and thirty, we will maintain the thirty-five foot buffer required per the transportation corridor overlay. C C O, which will include a twenty-five foot landscape buffer and a ten foot area for future road or. Imp um pedestrian improvements. This and other landscaping requirements have been included as proper condition fourteen and listed within the report. Uh, the entire site will be served by public water and sewer, which has been proffered with a proposed pump station and the single family tract. As noted in the community impact statement, all the residential units, including single, single family townhouses and apartments. Will utilize gas, heat and hot water in conjunction with Virginia natural gas. Um, bearing any unforeseen issues, which would bring natural gas further up Route three sixty to serve this entire area. Including any commercial that wanted to utilize that service. There are existing environmental features on the north side of the property, including wetlands that will be preserved per per the resource protection area. We envision the trail system to manure along those environmental features connecting to sidewalks at different locations to promote that walkability. Uh, for residents by connecting them to other amenities, the commercial tracks and the adjacent park. Um, so as Sherry noted, um, we have offered the one million dollars um in cash proppers. But the applicant and developers understand that, you know, they. Uh, the park wants to be retrofitted and there's a master plan underway for the park. Um, and so in order to be a good neighbor, you know, that's why they've offered to do improvements in lieu of the cash proppers of that. What became the bigger need from the community and the county. Um, so that is noted in our cash proffer. Uh, language. Next slide. Um, so the domain design manual in your report and the proper conditions speak to the envisioned architectural treatment of the different tracks. Including high quality materials for the sides and roofing. We've also included conceptual images for the various products, including the commercial multi-family buildings of being here. Um, as well as the single family and townhouses, which is on the next slide. Um, there are also images here that show the streetscape, which include that landscaping and sidewalks. Um, and then all roads that will accommodate general traffic will be constructed to be that standards to be public and state maintained. Um, so as Sherry also touched on, you know, we do have a list of proffer conditions that proffers the full report that you also have. So between the full report with the master plan, design manual and community impact statement. As well as the proper conditions and the ordinance requirement that we have to meet for the P planned unit development. We believe this case merits your approval this evening, but we are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Chair, if I may, the total project is somewhere around a hundred and sixty-six acres, correct? Uh, how many acres of affected wetland and R P A when this? At coming out of that hundred and sixty-six acres?
Um, let me see if I have the. Exact amount. But I believe it's. Over twenty or twenty-five acres. Um, but I'm not sure if we have it exactly calculated. Um, our wetlands department has been out there and has a. Resource protection area and it's working with the Corps to do an official delineation. So we don't have the official approval yet. Uh, from the Corps of Engineers, they usually do that during permitting, but. Um, as shown on the black and white version, all of those areas to the north would be preserved as R P A and I think it is around twenty acres.
So I'm looking at flex track B. Uh, under the. Options there, uh, one would be a recreation recreation facility private. Or a recreation facility public, that's a big difference. What are y'all looking at?
Um, and we've heard um that there might be a need for a public um kind of facility or recreation. Uh, community building if the park doesn't have one. I know there are plans for the park to have that there. Um, and then also if, you know, there was a desire from the community in the future to put their own private facility there as in a clubhouse or something like that. So that's why we include both of them.
So that would be, it is a possibility or it can be if we so desire to have that. Facility open to the general public and not just the people in that subdivision?
Um, as stated, the use would be allowed, um, yes. Yes, I'm not, you know, we would have to. If you like through. Next stage of development.
Someone else may ask.
Yeah, Ms. Miller, I know, but we had a lot of questions in planning commission and some of them, but previous board members were wondering about square footages of these. And I know you had worked at, we didn't have it when we had our meeting the other day, but you said you had since come up with some of those. Could you go over some of those? The square footages of the dwellings, townhomes, the apartments?
Um, yeah, so as it stated in your proffer conditions, um, number ten. The minimum gross floor area of each townhouse dwelling should be twelve hundred square feet. These are minimums as well, so they could be larger. Uh, the minimum gross floor area of a single family dwelling. For one story would be twelve hundred square feet and for um more than one story, so one and a half to two, uh, fourteen fifty square feet. Uh, we did put a stipulation that at least twenty five percent of the lots within the single family tract. Um, shall have dwelling units, um, either with a minimum square footage of sixteen hundred square feet for one story or two thousand square feet for more than one story. Again, these are just minimums, so it could range. Um, and then we do not have a particular size for the multifamily. Uh, they are. Projected to be market rate um apartments, so just kind of whatever the market calls for, but usually those range from, you know. Could range from nine hundred, fifteen hundred square feet depending on the size and how many bedrooms. Um, and then we did put in for proper condition fifteen uh the building coverage. Uh, the maximum building coverage and the commercial tract shown I'd be thirty percent of the total commercial acreage. It's just hard to put stipulations on square footage when we don't have the end users in mind. Um, but that's kind of typical that we see in other jurisdictions, but you put a. Maximum building coverage, um, so that you kind of can uh look at it that way once you're getting into the site plan. And understanding who are the end users and the interested commercial um developers.
For the for the commercial track, do you plan to attract tenants to that and and then build to suit or are you going to build to attract?
Um, I might have the developer tryman as well, but um I think our anticipation is to have. Somewhat pad ready sites because with the residential, you know, utilities would be come to the site. Um, and with that, there would kind of be pad ready, but then an end user would come in and probably dictate, you know, obviously how much parking is needed and. What the building would look like. Um, so probably a mixture of a little bit of both.
Gotcha. I'm trying to get a ground level vision for especially the 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 commercial tracks that are going to be fronting. Three sixty to the right of that main entrance way that you described. We're envisioning building just a strip center. And trying to attract tenants into that. Are you going to have commercial tracks that you will then have the, you know, whatever?
Uh, my name is John Neparlo with M H F Properties. Um, so with those specifically, they're intended to be out parcels. Um, so you know, I think we're currently showing six across uh as it as it fits now. Um, they would more than likely be for single tenant user users such as restaurant, banks, you know, whoever pharmacy potentially. Um, and if we were to build a retail uh strip center to attract tenants, that way it would more than likely be on. A commercial track A. And again, this is our initial thoughts. It could change as we. You know, get into the groundwork and everything. If somebody, if if there's some desired uses for those tracks, for whatever reason, we could easily ship.
And that that's my question, trying to. Progress the vision, especially for the the road facing.
So y'all will physically. More or less by his question, build to suit. You you're going to physically market and build. Or or not?
Well, I if I'm understanding the correction, it's uh the question, we would not necessarily build a blank building without a user in mind. And unless it was a retail strip center, uh, to your example, those tenants are a little bit more um cookie cutter, so to speak. Uh, so that is a possibility, but um, you know, again, it all kind of depends on interest.
You were telling me also that a lot of this is going to bank on their approval of the project itself, correct, as to who you may be able to draw. And a lot of them are not. Coming up front until after they know.
That's correct. Yeah, I mean, I I don't think it's any secret that businesses rely on rooftops and 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 vice versa. So, uh, you know, yes, I think I brought up in the planning commission meeting. Um, something very similar to that, yes.
And we also asked about, like I said, we mean pad ready. It's not like the building is going to be built. He's going to clear all the land, so they'll be like flat. And we said maybe they should, if we can even add something in if we want, that they may be all just grassy for right now. So in the meantime, they will upkeep and keep the. Uh, vegetation down so then, but the utilities and everything will be available so that when someone comes. They'll be quickly, and maybe we can work with E V A to try and help get somebody in there a little faster, but. It's not just going to be a uncut unkempt piece of property, that that whole section on the left and the strip in the front will be. Like I said, levels, all roads, curves, all that's in there except for the interior area, but it will be leveled and all the utilities will be available. And he's bringing gas to the whole subdivision. One of the stipulations was that the houses can use gas. The gas company will bring gas all the way to Central Garage.
That's correct. It is hard to have the commercial pads ready and available to be marketed. Uh, you know, we call it vertical construction, so it's ready for vertical construction, pad ready. Um, very early in the process. Um, and just to kind of touch on, I I believe Mr. Garber had brought up. Um, you know, it is in land use now, so you know, we are. Trying to switch. I think the area needs some commercial and instead of it just being R one, you know, three hundred unit residential development as is. Um, so it would come out of land use uh pretty quick in the process and and um the other note I had, which. Is with commercial alone, of course, uh, you you had mentioned something about the proffer coming later in the process. Hopefully, commercial would generate some taxes to kind of maybe offset that gap that you were speaking about.
Fifty-five, go ahead. Uh, fifty-five plus residences, is it? I really haven't. I didn't see that. I've heard that it was in there. Is it any plan for that?
Um, so at this time, a section has not been identified as strictly age restricted. Um, but we are cer- the developers certainly open to providing that type of housing if desired by the market. Um, but to your point in Chuck Flex Track B, um, which is identified on the right side, that um kind of larger flex track. It does allow for a few different uses, including age restricted, multi-family, life care facility, et cetera. Um, so if that became uh desired in the future or the market, um. You know, it was desired by the market, then we felt like that would be sort of the best suitable area for that type of development.
Do you have anything in the in the vicinity that we could that compares to this project that we could perhaps take a look at? That you can think of? And you don't have to answer right here, but if you going home tonight, if you can think, yeah, there's one over there at Rutland on on priest three oh one.
Um, as in like a mixed use community or like what type of, okay. I'm not aware of one off the top of my head, but we can certainly uh think of, I think on that. Or if anybody else.
I would just say, generally speaking, I think, you know, as Anne had mentioned before, all of the different um. Uh, design manual restrictions on the residential communities. Uh, as well as the the T C uh T C O overlay with with the commercial, uh, you know, uh, like brick and and stone uses and stuff like that. I think it would be high quality, which which goes with the store nature of this area, not not just King William, but Virginia in general, so.
Thanks, the question, sir. To. Go towards a specific colonial design, that's not been. That's not part of this project necessarily. Uh, for the storefronts especially.
Yeah, I I don't know that I was trying to tie it directly to colonial versus just high quality materials such as brick, stone, but there is stuff where there's already plank. Uh, there's a variety of materials, but I think the point is they're all high end.
I I think something that uh just down the corridor further to the east that would be similar is Rutland. Where you have your commercial development out on three sixty, high quality residential in the back. That's the closest thing I can think of. Uh, Isle of Wight County has Ben's Grant, commercial upfront, uh, mixed various uses of townhomes on a smaller lot, residential in the back. And then to answer your question, sir, about the R P A and the wetland impacts, I think we're at a half acre, a less than half acre of R P A. And about a quarter acre of wetland impacts on the whole entire hundred and sixty acres.
Might misheard that before. I thought you meant how many wet or the acre to wetlands and R P A encompassed.
I was just, yeah, I kind of wanted to know the the physical area of both. R P A and wetlands that would be subtracted from that hundred and sixty-six. I think that that's what you just stated, correct? Okay, thanks.
I think I'm ready to proceed with the public hearing if there's nobody else.
All right, the next item we have up will be a public hearing on resolution twenty. On resolution twenty three days of nine. Anybody, if I'd like to come forward to speak on this, you have three minutes. Seeing none, okay.
Hi, Lisa Mason, second district. I was at both the January second meeting of the, um, planning commission and then the January twelfth meeting, I guess. Of the working commission. And I came away very confused and very put off by the project. Um, the audience members, and I believe it's the developer owner. Kind of bullied the planning commission into voting on this, and I don't think that was right, because. They had legitimate questions that they had gotten from their constituents to answer. And I know some of them are back there right now, and I wish they would come up and ask their questions. Um, they had many questions and they were basically bullied into voting versus. Getting their questions answered from the planning commission, and that's where this project really should start. And, uh, I would, again, I was very confused on the twelfth, um, Max Havlin, is it, Max, is that right?
Yeah, Max is fine.
Max clarified some things in the process that are going to happen, but it seemed like the public doesn't get a lot of input after that meeting. And I'm very confused as to what more the public gets to say about what's built. What the uses are. And the like, like I said, I came up very confused and I was very involved in the rewriting of the ordinances, so I understand. But I'm very confused as what process is, and I know Sherry. Came back with a list of things that have to be approved before this can actually go forward. So there are a lot of checks in here, but there's not a lot of chance for the public to really say. How they feel about this, because it kind of came up pretty quick. And it doesn't seem like anybody really wants to say much tonight or ask questions. So thank you.
Hello, uh, Jake Levy with, uh, on fifth district, I'm just curious of what the plan is if there's three hundred and twenty more homes for the school system. Can our school system handle three hundred and twenty more residents? Uh, houses living in, you know, in the community, I've got a young son who, um, three years from school age and. Thinking what's going to happen when you have three hundred and twenty more homes potentially. Can our overcrowded high school, middle school and grade school handle another three hundred and twenty residents? Thanks.
Because Miller did have, they checked with our school board, and we have a member of the school board here tonight, so you told us that the school board told you that. They wouldn't have any problem with the additional houses. Do you have an exact number? I said the public doesn't know, that was like, we know, but they don't know. And it is, was confusing, and like, no, we didn't get bullied, like I said, uh. Did apologize, so he was. Said he was a little abrupt, but no, we don't get bullied.
Steven, when the school was at sixty five percent, it's never seen, I think.
Yes, they told right now.
Um.
We're not max capacity, so.
Uh, yes, we did ask, um, for capacity numbers from Dr. White, I believe he, um. Has left now, but when he sent us the information from, I believe, the, um, one of the schools. Um, remember the school system, uh, it. Looks like. The high school is at sixty three percent, um, in design capacity, the middle school seventy five percent. Uh, and then the primary school and elementary school are fifty seven percent and sixty nine percent, so. That's the numbers that we received from the school system.
It's on page one sixty seven of our package.
Thank you.
Brian News, nice to meet you. Uh, I got a lot of houses being built or not, what about the waste facilities? Waste management facilities, it's already a danger right now on Saturday mornings, Friday mornings, Sunday mornings. Trying to pull in and out of the main one right there off Route thirty.
You tell them about zips.
Convenience, convenience center right behind the house school.
Yeah, right by the house school, there's a line backed up in the morning, people trying to pull it out, everybody slamming on brakes.
You'd be happy to know, we have a plan for work, uh, and that's actually, we're going to discuss that later on in this agenda. Stick around and you'll see what our plans are for that, but yeah, we're aware that there's a big problem.
Houses, we gotta add more waste facilities.
Solve it, and I think we, we finally have a, a workable solution that we can actually get in the works. Soon to solve a lot of that problem.
I thought you were talking about Hampton Roads and they say they'll, they'll be able to. Anyone else? See you in the room. I'll close this public.
Chairman, before you close, I, I just want to give, let the evidence know. If you were going to make any amended proffers, it has to happen before the public hearing is closed. If, if that is your. Proper to go along with the rebranding application, that's totally fine, I just wanted to give you the opportunity.
I think we received some of those today, Greg.
Yeah, we received them.
Okay. You can go ahead.
All right, now I close this public here.
Well, yeah, something that's brought to my attention is, is the concern about the potential delay in, in the proper payment as it relates to. The, the improvements that need to be done. At the rec park specifically perhaps. Um, because if we even build this thing to half capacity, we've not made significant. Ingress and egress improvements at the, at the rec park, there will be. So, do we have a plan to address that? Um, as use of that facility, no doubt grows with, with this as well. Um, to address. The, the roadway improvements there. Without. Use of the property. That ostensibly may not be available until later in the development of the property.
I hate to tell you this, but the, the wreck plane is almost over and the gentleman is ready to come back and, and appear before the board. Uh, February the sixth, and. Obviously, there is a plan as to how. The exit and entrance will be designed. Uh, the way the parking would be structured. If we don't get the million dollars in a timely, in a timely way. Then we would have no choice but to come to the board and ask to. Take care of that ourselves. And then that million dollars could be used in another. Part of recreation, if it's not the neighboring park. As you know, there's a plan to develop another park that could possibly be just down the road. That would, uh, be suitable for soccer and, um. Uh, football. So it is a matter of timing. But I think either way, um, we have a plan to address it, it just, would it be with our funds or would it be with their? Easy thing would be to be with theirs, but. We understand that their proffer is based on a percentage of houses built. Which is a similar proffer to one that we have ongoing in the county right now. So we're not asking any more or any less of them, we actually would not ask them at all, they're offering. Um, then we, then we have in the past, we've dealt with other developers.
Yeah.
Mr. Go ahead.
Can I just ask them that maybe when we go with that plan, we have a, alternative resources to make those improvements, um, identified? Yeah.
Yes, sir, I feel like we do.
That plan that you just referenced, it was a projection of. X number of dollars per lot, wasn't it?
Yes.
So that would be. Work, work shape in that fashion, it would be a gradual in feet of money. And not.
That's correct.
Contingent upon. The build out of fifty percent.
That's correct. But I also heard the developer just say that. If commercial would happen to spark. Uh, it more in advance than what might be anticipated, then that could. Free up some, some revenue or capital that they may be able to put back in sooner than the fifty percentile.
Um, now, I, I think, I think that's all for me, you know, um, it's, it's a, it's a unique opportunity, uh, for.
Do we need to, or can we put a stipulation in there for the? Uh, recreation facility on site B, I think. For that to be public or is that asking for a profit? Is, is that asking for a profit?
Public versus.
Yeah, uh, public rather than, uh, pub, uh, private.
That, that commitment would have needed to be made in the proffers, the restriction on the use of that.
Which we've, we've missed the opportunity.
That is still a possibility within our use list, but it's not a commitment that's made in their zoning. No, no, I'll, so, um. Supervisor was asking about some language within the P U D ordinance that's. Uh, specified that the board of supervisors can conditionally approve. Um, an application based on, um, the. P U D ordinance. That ordinance specifically allows, excuse me, um, conditions to be placed on applications. Or exceptions to the general requirements of the P U D ordinance, as I read it, sure, okay. Um, so if the applicant had asked for a height waiver, for example, of a hundred feet. That could have been conditioned by the board of supervisors, similar to a conditional use purpose. Their application did not request any exceptions from the general standards of the P U D ordinance requirements, which would. By a specific example, would be forty five feet of height, which they have committed to, and there's a. Um, so that language is specific to exceptions requested by the applicant.
As the applicant was telling, planning commission and other than me, we had, they were willing to work with us. All along the next process, but there's some other members have mentioned to me, what proof do we have that you will do that, like we've. Like I said, another thing, sort of like the. Enforcing of some of the other ordinance, since we don't have any control over it, we don't, can't really prove it, you've said it, but how do we, and like I said, since we didn't put anything in there before. I can't, I guess we can't edit anything now, but, I mean. Can you sort of elaborate on what could, what you were telling us, because we said there has to be a major, like, site plan come up, even though it's not. A public hearing, it does have to be voted on, doesn't it? Just by you. By the planning department. To the board, right, that's what I thought, so we, but we just don't have a public hearing, we'll have some info, that's all, everybody thinks we're not having it, that's the, the. Whole thing's confusing and I hate, sorry for the public, it's, this is our first P U D, so. It's, we're going through a learning curve and a lot of. Things, so.
Yeah, I think just to elaborate a, a little bit, just, I made some of those comments, you know, we are relatively local to the area and I think, um. You know, we want to be a good neighbor, we've had a business for over twenty years here in, in, in Central Garage and more recently in West Point. Um, so to that point, of course, you know, the project needs to make good business sense, but our doors open. Cell phones available all the time to work through the process, we have already engaged with county staff and, and some of you as well as the planning commission. Uh, and residents in the committee to try to understand the needs, I mean, we cannot force. A pharmacy to show up as an example, but that is an understood need, and if we have the ability to bring it here, we will. Um, so I think there's a balance of. Uh, a successful project, uh, from, from a developer's standpoint financially, as well as being a good neighbor in the community.
I'll make a motion that we approve the. Z O two dash twenty two but application for the applicant.
And accept the proper.
Oh, and accepted proper conditions that was changed earlier today.
Mr. Greenwood.
Aye.
Mr. Garber.
Aye.
Mr. Warren.
Aye.
Mr. Moskowski.
Aye.
This Chairman Hodges.
Aye.
Thank you.
It's like you're up, Steve. Next item we have is, uh, resolution twenty three dash ten. Disposition of real estate property for public use, Stephen Hudson.
Good evening, gentlemen, um, this matter has to do with, uh, the property, I'm sure you. Are aware of, the county owns, uh, a lot in Kennington, it was proffered. Um, in the Kennington subdivision as a proposed library site. Um. Board, uh, might wish instead to have a lot at the corner of. Sheldon and Route thirty, uh, right across from the park, um, might see that as a better site for the library. And therefore, um, it's been proposed that we can swap the properties, so this. Disposition of property would be contingent on, uh, an exchange of property, uh, which the board would think is a better site for a library. Um, the proposed site is shown as a diagram.
It's four thirty seven.
Yeah. This is a three acre site at the corner of Sheldon and Route thirty. Rather than. A lot that is within the Kennington ten subdivision before reaching the community center. On the main entrance.
We don't have a slide, but we.
It's in the agenda. No, no presentation slides, sorry.
Mr. Hudson, comparatively speaking to the Kennington. How does this, is it larger, smaller?
It is larger, uh, the Kennington site is two and a half acres, the one at the corner of Sheldon and Route thirty is three acres. It also has direct frontage on Route thirty and Sheldon, whereas the site within Kennington fronts, um. The Kennington main entrance.
I was gonna say it's in a better spot, you're correct, the proposed U turn.
I think it's a no brainer, I, I think it's a much better location. Better access. Not in the subdivision. So I would make a motion to approve resolution twenty three ten. Oh, okay, I forgot about that.
It is wooded right now.
There it is.
Yeah, but it doesn't tell you it's wooded. Uh, four forty.
Four three seven.
You got it.
This water in the corner.
Yes.
Yeah. Across from the rec park.
Exactly, across from the rec park. Exactly across from the rec park.
Any other question? All right, at this point, we have a public hearing on twenty-three dash ten, the disposition of real real estate property for public use. Anybody like to speak, please come forward today. See, no one come forward, that closes public here.
Motion to approve that resolution.
Any further discussion? Mr. Row.
Mr. Garber. Mr. Warren. Mr. Moskowski. Mr. Greenwood. Chairman Hodges.
All right, and the next item is new business item.
Miss Chairman, you know, staff would like to recommend that items eleven A and eleven B be removed from the agenda. Autumn eleven A would be deferred to February the sixth and eleven B would be deferred to February the thirteenth.
Any further discussion, Mr. Row?
Mr. Warren. Mr. Moskowski. Mr. Greenwood. Mr. Garber. Chairman Hodges.
Item C is still incorrect.
That's correct.
Junior Resources Authority are applying for the water tower bond issuance, Stephen Hodges.
Gentlemen, staff has been uh, in discussion with Davenport um, on bond financing for the water tower and water main extension project as we have talked about it throughout the last year. The deadline for spring borrowing is February the third. That is, and staff is working towards making that application, just wanted to make you aware and uh, get any comment from you, this would not be your formal approval or consideration of the matter. We need to apply first, but February twenty-seventh is when we have scheduled for a public hearing for um, the board's consideration for public comment and to consider the formal bond approval.
And I understand that utility fund will pay.
That's correct.
You don't need anything.
Not anything unless you have any further comment on it, I just wanted to make sure you were aware and uh, if you did have any, any comments on it.
This was wondering, did I say, do we get, have we upgraded like the CPA that came couple of weeks back, or is this one of those loans you're trying to get us this on top of there?
So when uh, Mr. Sanderson of Davenport did his presentation on debt ceiling, debt help, um, he dedicated one or two slides to utility debts, and that was where he he said that so this source, V R A, this uh, bond pool um, is good for this type of project, and he forecasted, I believe it was, he showed us, I think, the break even point for being able to pay it entirely out of you, out of utilities was, um, as long as we maintain, if we didn't drop more than thirty-five percent in connections from where we're at now. A year. I'm up next. There, no further comments.
You're still up, so resolution twenty-three dash eleven, budget adjustment request improvement plan for VIPSa. Still here?
Gentlemen, as we have discussed before, and as um, you approved the design phase uh, with Gordian and Centennial Contractors for the expansion of the VIPSa transfer site adjacent to the high school, um, what I bring before you tonight is the construction phase uh, for your approval. Um, at the beginning of the fiscal year, um, the board approved four thousand dollars to be put towards this project. Once we started getting into, that was before we even had a quote, that was just a ballpark start. Uh, once we started getting into the figures, um, it looked like it was going to be much higher than that when we contracted with Gordian uh, to start the project and the uh, do the engineer design, um, construction cost uh, was estimated to be in the high three hundred thousand dollar range on top of design. And then when I gave an update in December, it, um, we were at five hundred forty, five hundred seventy-five. Um, that has come back down, much closer to the original uh, cost. Total project cost, design, construction and overhead, uh, the admin fee would be at five hundred and ten thousand dollars, so about five hundred ten, one hundred sixty-two dollars, so about a hundred ten thousand more than what was originally approved in the capital plan. What has been amended uh, this week, uh, since the packets first came out is that uh, discussed with the finance director, that's um, rather than the unassigned fund funding this increase, um, you've identified that uh, with a a grant that fire chief achieved, uh, we will have funds uh, that we can move from his grant fund to this uh, fund. The S C V A grant.
The board had appropriated two hundred and eighty thousand dollars for capital to for local match for the S C V A, uh, the grant that we received was three hundred and, we are being reimbursed three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, our total cost, I think, uh, oh, you don't have the updated one, but it ended up that we did not have to ha- use so much, we didn't have to use the full two eighty. Um, we're actually only, we're gonna move forward one sixty out of that two eighty that you had appropriated for S C V A and reappropriate, we're asking to reappropriate that to this project instead, we won't need that for S C V A.
I'm gonna put it since we have interest public, um, even I think you just walked out, what the, what the uh,
project is, yeah.
You have to go to granted details, but we've been there, there's enough time, but just to, you know.
Sure, and uh, it is in the packet, um, let's see, if you go down to page. The engineer drawings begin after page four sixty-seven. There you are.
Mr. Hodges, didn't you say in our last meeting that a lot of that increased cost was for build dirt?
Build dirt, and they redesigned, so we went back to review the plans, asked there was some way, how can we get this back under, they had a a cap, that they wanted to get under so they could get the job as well. And they redesigned, and I had several offers of filter.
You can't take it?
Well, when they redesigned it, we didn't need all that build dirt anymore. I was gonna use the topography of the land a little bit more. I just heard, I even heard back today, um, they were out late last week, Friday, to do soil borings. Um, and that's kind of, that was the last really question mark if there was something under the ground that was gonna have a problem, and we don't have the final report, but I got the initial report back today that said that's, um, it's, uh, the soils were suitable for this project. Um, there was a couple of wet spots, it wasn't, didn't say anything about trash, it was groundwater that we might uh, have to have a change order, small change order to scoop out some and put in gravel.
So this, this five, ten, one sixty-two, eleven, is this a locked in price, or is it gonna be a moving target?
That is the locked in price for this contract now. We're not gonna sign it until I've got the, make sure that VIPSa has given their blessing on it, um, we've gone through the review and pass permit review, but I wanna make sure it's got everything in it before we sign that contract. Um, and this does not include, um, say, new equipment. So that's coming from VIPSa, I asked David Magnet today about total cost of everything that we, it's a ballpark of what we might expect that would need to go into this, that is not included in this contract, and he thought it was in the fifty, sixty thousand dollar range. That would be shed, a compactor, some guard rail.
That would be what they are supplying, or or that would be in addition to this.
In addition to that five, ten, because that's, that's in part of the contract, that would be us working with VIPSa to procure procure additional items. For the public, um, and looking at this drawing, what this expansion entails is really adding a loop around what is existing as well as adding a compactor, so, um, this loop will allow for straight pull-ins, uh, no more turning around in a cul-de-sac and backing in a trailer, instead you will pull into the loop, pull straightforward and then back into dump, or continue around the loop to where another compactor is, so there will be two options and uh, much longer queuing for all of it, as well as twice the capacity.
And no backing up.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Right.
That use our total ten acres, or is it?
No, um, so this is really almost entirely contained within the original acreage. And I'm asking the VIPSa director if there's any way to utilize what's in the back, just to park containers that might have, be able to do any kind of a quicker turnover. And we've had some discussions about how to change that, because that's always an issue.
Do we have an estimated timeline if approves and all that?
If it's approves, they're, they wanna go now, they're, they're ready to roll.
Would, would operations be impacted, any closure?
Initia- yeah, there probably will be some closures, um, our initial discussions, uh, of course, talked about that, of course, there are like one or two days a week, one day a week at the site, right, that is closed. So they are looking at doing everything they can when it is closed, and much of the work is going to be outside of where uh, operations are right now, of course, there will be some times where it will be impacted. Uh, but uh, initial discussions had those as middle.
As as long as they can give us forewarning.
They're gonna be giving us forewarning, we wanna be able to let the public know as much as possible, but we're hopeful that the public will be forgiving considering it's going to improve the site.
All right, Mr. Chair, I'm the approval of the resolution twenty-three eleven.
Mr. Moskowski. Mr. Greenwood. Mr. Garber. Mr. Warren. Chairman Hodges.
I had immediate discussion of staggered election terms for the board supervisors and school board. County attorney and Allison Fox. You gonna lead it?
I can, absolutely, I don't mind talking. Okay, so this is a little last minute, so hopefully you all have this fun insert that I created for you today. To give you kind of some information that you guys requested on the process for stag- with possible staggered terms for the board of supervisors. Um, again, these two state codes that you have referenced in front of you um, outlines the different, the first one outlines the different options that you do have, which I'll go over those in a, in a few seconds. Um, and then the second one references the fact that the school boards follow in suit whatever the governing body of the locality does, so whatever you put into resolution or an ordinance that you create, if that's the route you go, the school board will have to do exactly what's being done here. Within the options that you all have, um, to to choose from, you would have to do either a resolution or an ordinance adopting whichever one that you decide to go with. Um, there are three of them that you can look into, the first one would be after the general election is held, two members of the board, once elected, two newly elected members will be able to volunteer if they would like to, to use, to do that two-year term and to hold a two-year term. Um, which the expiration date on that term would be December thirty-first of twenty twenty-five. And then you would be, that those, that position would be put back on the ballot to have, to be elected for a new four-year term. So that it would be every two years, you would have an election for these staggered terms, you would have three on one ballot, two on another. Um, the second option, um, after certifying the election, after it's done and it's been certified, the electoral board assigns the individual terms of members by lot. So they would, it's basically essentially the same process as not option number three, it would just happen after the certification of the election is done. Um, option number three was the, is the electoral board may assign terms by district and draw, in a drawing held prior to the last day of qualification, if directed in an ordinance or resolution adopted thirty days prior to the last day of qualification. So essentially what that means is the last day of qualification for you to be on the ballot in November is June the twentieth, twenty twenty-three by seven P M. So the board, if you choose that option, you would have to form a resolution or an ordinance that was, is adopted thirty days prior to that, which would be about May nineteenth. It can be done before that as well, but that is your finite deadline. Um, and then you would be actually directing the electoral board to hold a public meeting where the drawing takes place to determine which two um, districts would have a two-year term for that election, and that would be held in November. So they would be determining it before the election is held in November, so you would know going into that what two precincts or two districts, excuse me, would have the two-year term going into it. And that gives anybody that wants to qualify the opportunity to know that information before they qualify. So those are the three options that you have, I'm happy to answer questions, Max probably can direct a little bit more, we've been communicating quite a bit, trying to get this information, but we do have to make sure that we maintain the state code, um, the administrative code when it comes to electing um, school boards. We do have um, an at-large member on school board as opposed to a first district member, so I think you could probably encode sync first district up with the at-large member when it comes to keeping them in order, so for example, um, if districts two and district four are selected, then district two and district four of the school board would have to follow suit as well.
That was gonna be my question. Now you realize that they had to follow suit.
Yes.
I didn't either, because I thought it only depended to us.
I'm sorry, what's the, here's my, my primary concern with it, and so I'll ask, and I don't expect you to have this, but if you do, it'd be impressive. What's, what's the delta in turnout between gubernatorial off-year and off-off?
So if if you're asking for the turnout difference between twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two this past year?
Um, more like twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty, well, let's, let's give like general assembly years, all right? So basically what we'd be doing here is we'd be splitting the districts into, the the two or three would be happening in our gubernatorial off-years, and then the other two or three would be happening in our off-off years, you know, just the house. So my, my concern, and the reason I asked the question is that, to me, and I know other localities do it, and it's no problem, but just here's, here's what I like, I I I think having it all in one year democratizes it a little bit more for me, because you don't have, you, you can't kind of coattail off of a broader general election, it hyper-localizes the election. And doesn't give any type of turnout weight to any, any group of districts over another that might be occurring in a, in a more active electoral year versus those that would be taking place in less active.
But if the people of your particular district are truly concerned, they will come out to vote.
And I can say, I don't, um, this is bad of me to say, but I, I know more of the election years as opposed to like exactly the timelines of the terms of people, I gubernatorial, obviously, and presidential, those are the larger ones and all local, um, but if you're looking at, so for example, twenty twenty-one, we had about a seventy-four percent turnout in, in the elections, I don't have the numbers from two thousand and nineteen from the last local that we had, because I was not in this position at that time. Twenty twenty-two, this past election year, we had over fifty percent. Um, I would say it's probably closer to sixty, um, I would have to pull those numbers exactly, but, um, so there, since um, I would say in the last three years, elections in general have heightened, so it doesn't really matter what's on the ballot, I think people are turning out regardless. They, they wanna get involved, they wanna vote, um, so I think that we have seen a higher number, I can't use, for example, I can't use data from the la- I couldn't, I couldn't look at the data from the last gubernatorial election to this year to know kind of what I was looking at because the, the turnout was ridiculously different. Um, I couldn't use data from twenty eighteen to determine for this upcoming, so I just, the, the, the numbers aren't in line with what they used to be, so to give an idea of if I think. The 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 numbers aren't in line with what they used to be. So to give an idea of if I think that. Doing it every two-year election, one would have more turnout than the other. I don't know that I can honestly say that, yes, that's the case because. I mean, we've we've been kind of put. Put back a little bit on like, you know, the numbers that we're seeing are just astronomical. People want to vote and they want to come out and they want to do it. So. You may be surprised that the numbers would probably. Be equal when it comes to those two elections.
Is there additional cost due in this?
Uh no, we all we we are legally obligated, obviously, to have a November general. There's always something on that ballot. Um so we're already doing an election anyway, so having it in staggered versions is, there's no extra cost.
All right, well, Ms. Walker has skillfully dismantled my argument against not convinced me why we should.
It's Fox now.
I'm sorry.
Well, you know, I I asked for this after the last election. I noticed that it seemed like every locality had. Staggered terms. And I think it's a good thing. If you have staggered terms, there's something right. Nuclear happens, the whole board could be gone in 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 one swat.
Do you have any idea how many Virginia counties? Do you have access to that? How many Virginia counties are? Four-year terms, how many are staggered?
I do not have an idea of what to break down.
You don't either.
No, that was not the data that I started to pull. Sorry.
Well, because uh rather than open up a a protracted debate on the merits of it tonight. Um we've gotten the guidance from counsel and and expert guidance from Ms. Fox, apologies, um on. The options available to us. I think I think maybe uh we've got each year or or at least until May, kind of figure this out. So let's. Let's continue discussion.
My question was simple. Does anybody know how many? That's a simple question. Sorry it took so long.
Oh, I mean, there's probably. I'll hand that over. That's probably the information we gathered that would have been.
I didn't send the survey out to ask who all did it. I just, when I was getting some general information at first, um I just asked, you know, hey. Has anybody recently established this? What was the process that you took so that I could gather that information to kind of know? What options to give you. Um and then in speaking with legal counsel as well, we've just kind of dissected the the code. To figure that information out. I can probably send some feelers out. I do have a statewide search to kind of see how many localities actually have staggered terms. I'm happy to send that out to see what kind of response I get. Um but. In the in the grand scheme of things, if if you guys choose to move forward, like I said, the only one that you truly have a timeline on is the third option. Where you would want, if you wanted to determine it before the election actually happens and to put it in place of. Drawing those districts and knowing that information. Otherwise, if you choose to do that and you pass an ordinance and a resolution, it all happens after the election is done.
What's the difference between a. It says uh drawing and the third option or a lot.
Sure, it's the I asked that question too. Because I was a little confused, but it's the same thing. It's basically just determining um based on. Um a drawing of straws or a random draw or whatever the case may be, whatever is determined and what's. Chosen for the the method of figuring that out. Um one would just, like I said, be ha- be done after the electoral board has certified the election, then they would. Do the public drawing of which precincts or districts, excuse me, would be um done. Uh or you have the option to be able to figure that out before the election happens so that you can have an idea going into the general.
One person, there's another strain going, what if afterwards and we just go with the first option and one person, two people want to now, but what if maybe one doesn't get. Re-elected. If one does and still wants to do it, can there be a lot?
So you can't determine before the election. So the people that are interested in possibly being a volunteer, um. They just keep it in the back of their mind, just in case, you know, seeing how the turnout is and what happens in the election. But. Um you you do run that risk. If you decide the volunteer option, um then. Five people can be elected and then they just say, you know what, I don't want to be that two-year term. And then they just and they don't volunteer.
That's what I mean, but what if what if just one does? One does, you had.
So it has to be, so the the way that I read it and I could be jumbling up the words a little bit. Uh it has to be the minimum amount that so the quorum amount has to be set for the four-year term and then two. Would have to follow suit to do the two-year term so that it would be on a on an actual stagger. It can't just be one. It has to be two or none.
Right, that's what I mean. But if one volunteers, would they have a lot?
So that would be something that you all would think about and talk about before making your ordinance and fix picking which option you want.
Yeah, to to put it simply, two, two would have volunteer.
Yeah.
Can't have one.
You can't have one even though.
No, you have to either, if you pick the volunteer option, two people have to volunteer. You pick the drawing option, then the drawing option is the only option.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Well, it has to be done by.
So that so the adoption of, if you choose option three, the adoption of the resolution or the ordinance that's put in place by the board of supervisors. Has to be adopted and finalized by thirty days before the the qualification period. Qualification period, as I stated, is June the twentieth. So it has to be and May the twentieth is a Saturday, so before May nineteenth. It would need to be done. If you're if you're choosing that option.
Correct, and the the board would have to adopt an ordinance electing staggered terms. The decision as to whether or not it's decided by magisterial district or. Um you know, individually appointed by law, that can be by separate action, whether it's by ordinance or resolution. Um but but there is a ordinance that needs to be adopted to say, we as a board are moving to stagger. So they don't have to be the same action. They can be the same action.
Yeah, I I don't think we need to push it off that far. Then we just need to do a little bit of basic information gathering and then make a decision. So I would say.
March.
March, not February.
March is, oh, okay, let's do February. Get it over with. It won't take.
Thank you.
We already laid the groundwork.
All right. Can you make sure it gets over? I I guess if February or March, yeah.
I don't remember March, because also February is whatever. I don't care. Got so much in February.
Well, if February is a package agenda, that's fine. We can we can move it off, but I was just thinking that it's something that I don't think. Would require a great amount of time, but March is fine.
All right. So we gonna go page eleven o'clock, I guess.
I guess the steps would be you would you'd want to look at an ordinance. At your next, is that correct? Or do you want to decide on whether there's an ordinance?
In March.
At your work session.
Well, again, here's the other thing I'm thinking, if we're adapting an ordinance, then we've got. Timeline, then we've got to meet that as well in order to adopt it.
Correct, yeah, correct. If you're going in that direction, that that's correct. Well, we can put it on February. You can be thinking about which option you're you're interested in, if any. Um and if it includes an ordinance, that would give us plenty of time to draft it and hold and then hold the public hearing.
February.
February. All right, February, at February thirteen.
That's work session.
When that when you want to do it? At the work session?
Let's do the regular meeting.
Do you want to do the regular meeting? Okay, it'd be twenty-seven. February twenty-seven. Mr. Chairman, I'll be brief. Uh you have my report in front of me and you also have the amended report. I always send one a week in advance uh. To go over some things and then I updated the day of the meeting and you have that. Uh before I begin, let me uh formally introduce Max and. Hey, Slavin, Hilevin, tell us how we pronounce your last name, man.
Uh pronounced Hilevin. But I answered anything.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. Uh Max has been uh. Max has been with us uh on a regular basis now for a couple of months and. He will now assume the lead chair uh from San from San Zanderson. To serve us uh with our legal uh services. Uh welcome back. We appreciate having you and uh at some point, we we do want to formally thank Andrew for. For the time that he uh invested in the county uh over a long period of time and we'll do that at the appropriate time. Thank you. We're glad to, we're glad to have you. Mr. Chairman, uh just a couple of dates. Um first of all, I want to remind the general public that we do have a budget work session next Monday. Uh that's scheduled for seven o'clock. It's here in the boardroom. Uh we will be hearing uh from the constitutional officers and their budget requests as well as um. Uh social services and the registrar and. Ms. Brown will be leading that discussion and then the others will be there to uh to assist her with uh any questions that you might have as we present. Also, um. The school division, King William School Division, has sent out a survey. That they're seeking public input on as they search for a new superintendent. Uh press release was uh was sent out, I believe it was Friday. Um they will be having a public hearing on that search. Which uh they will have taken the data that they've received and then also received comment the night. It's at uh six o'clock at Hamilton Homes Middle School. So anyone who would like to make comment on the superintendent's search. Uh they're looking for a number of factors, qualifications, backgrounds, that kind of thing. Uh January thirty-first, six o'clock at Hamilton Homes is uh is where they need to be. Mr. Chairman, I put uh a bulletin in front of most of your seats. Uh I believe I gave the chairman and the vice chairman theirs on Friday uh or Thursday when we met uh for the uh. Uh agenda review. It's relative to major bills that are before the general assembly right now. And we're continuing to track uh uh that to see uh what might be. The most important to to King William and to the region. Um there's a meeting of the planning, uh district planning uh commission on Wednesday. And we are likely to hear some update there. As you know, our uh. Uh legislative liaison is Robert Crockett. He represents all the counties that are in the uh Middle Peninsula Planning District. And um he does a really, really good job of uh of keeping us informed on things that we need to uh to be aware of. So we'll be. Looking forward to Mr. Crockett and his uh and his update. On Friday, uh we've been talking about elections this evening. A special election um is uh. On the horizon from March the seventh. That is for the uh the Office of Treasurer. Uh in-person voting uh began on Friday. And um that will continue up until the last two Saturdays, I believe, of the uh. Uh prior to the uh to the election. Ms. Fox will have the building open those la- those last two Saturdays prior for anyone who would want to come in on Saturday prior to the uh to the election.
But the precincts aren't opening.
No, just uh just here. This, that's the only precinct that's open for early voting is here in this building. And see, I think that completes uh. Anything that I would uh need that you can't see right in front of you or having your uh having your notes. Are there are there any questions from anyone? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, we can skip on down to board of supervisors comments.
Just wanted to get back into, I've had some citizens asking about internet again. I know we talked about we were gonna try to get some kind of update when. Maybe some addresses, some final dates, but sort of just like everything else, it's just silence. So. People call the company, they don't get any information. They don't know if they're coming or not. Then some of them have been saying they're not coming, so I don't know. We could maybe get. Something definite on that, where they're working. I've seen a lot of people out there, but.
We've, I'd ask for an update next month.
No, that's all I had. And thanks, everybody. Come, looks like a huge crowd. I almost packed to the passes. That looks nice. Thanks, everybody. I hope everybody had a nice new year. Thanks for coming.
Not much for me tonight. Um thanks, everybody, for sticking around. Thanks especially to Ms. Fox for hanging around to give us that little blurb of information. Uh as we keep her past uh at ten o'clock. Couple of, couple of, you know, contentious issues tonight. Uh I I've always tried to be. Try to maximize allowance for people to do what they want to do with their own property, but uh we've also uh had enough issues here lately where people have. Pushed the boundaries of that and 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 skirted the regulations to a point where I don't think we can find any comfort with with the uh. The short-term rental thing. And again, I think in addition to the application that we had tonight, it it does call for a deeper dive into the ordinances and how we want to regulate those things going forward and where we think. They make sense to be located within the county, uh if at all. Other than that, um we'll see you next Monday and then the Monday after that. And then uh, yeah, on and on.
Great to bring you up.
Uh thank everybody for coming. It was a big crowd. I do look forward to the conversation about staggered elections. Since I did request that initially. Uh and the board members that are planning on running for reelection, Bill, you want to worry that. Good district, it's same, be very careful. I did a petition and I lost something like ten. Signatures because I I went all over the line. So uh the the map is pretty hard to read if it's simply, especially when somebody in the fourth district. I'd like to get another. I'd like to get another uh update on uh Sweet Sue Soler again. I went by the owner of that property's house, had a discussion with him. I was there for over an hour. He he's not happy with what's going on there. He's trying to get out of the contract. He tells me that that his contract. Expires somewhere around March seventeenth. Whether that's fact or not, I don't know. Oh, that's pretty much it.
Uh regarding the um holy situation, I hope that we can impose the same. Discretion on on adjacent landowners when it comes up. For a variety of things that we've seen this past year and we just kind of blew off these adjacent landowners. So.
All right. Thank everybody for coming. Most of them have gone. I hope the guy did hear about Vipso Board went out to go, but I'm not so sure about that. Anyway, thank God. See you on Monday. Uh I think we do have.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move the convening, closed meeting in accordance with section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A one of the Code of Virginia to consider a personnel matter involving the appointment of individuals to boards and commissions. And in accordance with section twenty-two, that's got to be two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A four of the Code of Virginia. Related to the protection of privacy of individuals regarding a personal matter not related to public business in order to protect the privacy of individuals.
In discussion, Mr. Colonel.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Or Mr. Barber.
Hi.
Mr. Warren.
Hi.
Mr. Moskowski.
Hi.
Chairman Hodges.
Hi.
So have a good day. All right. Think they're hot.
I'm sorry.
The war zone. Call the meeting back to order. Mr. Chair, I move we reconvene in open session.
Second. No discussion on that, Colonel.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Mr. Morton.
Hi.
Mr. Moskowski.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Chairman Hodges.
Hi, Mr. Chair. I move SR one. Second.
Mr. Colonel.
Mr. Morton.
Hi.
Mr. Moskowski.
Hi.
Mr. Rainwood.
Hi.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Chairman Hodges.
Hi.
Mr. Chair, in lieu of a, uh, a resolution with the number comma, make a motion that we appoint Mr. Otto Williams to a one-year term to the Middle Peninsula Planning District Commission expiring December thirty first, twenty twenty-three.
Mr. Moskowski.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Mr. Morton.
Hi.
Chairman Hodges.
Hi.
Mr. Chair, move adjournments.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Mr. Morton.
Hi.
Mr. Moskowski.
Hi.
Chairman Hodges.
Hi.